Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Colang.
Here.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Serman.
Here.
Chairman Duffy.
Chair is present. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on January 8th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There is one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to an absence, only six members are present. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware, therefore, that a vote of three to three, which really is a tie, not in favor of an application, will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that evening the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is February 6th. There is no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the application... Okay. Where am I going with this?
Just later.
All right. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Are you guys going to speak? In the back, are you going to speak? Okay. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first meeting? Our first case of the evening.
Our first case is 2018 C-50, 435 Lake Avenue. This is a request for a 288.25 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the modification of an existing legal non-conforming structure, a circular driveway.
Hello. Welcome back. Good to see you guys again.
Thank you. Thank you. John?
My name is John Kevin Porman, and Jeannie, my wife, and I reside at 435 Lake.
We've resided there for almost 20 years. We've been village residents for about 30 years. This variance application arose in connection with our application to repair our driveway. Apparently, our driveway is considered being located on the front yard, even though our address is Lake, the driveway is on Fifth. And it currently has coverage that is in excess of the permitted coverage. And one of the things we wanted to do in repairing our driveway is to move... There's two columns, and I have some pictures that I can share with you. There are two columns.
When you're ready for the pictures, there's that drawer on the side of the podium on your side there. If you pull that out, there's an overhead camera. You could pull it out a lot farther.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. And then, once you're ready, she'll turn it on.
Okay. Thank you.
And the columns are historic. The house was built in 1896, and, you know, they were original to the house.
So they were designed for horse and buggy. And the oak tree that was planted, as you entered the driveway, was planted, let's say, has grown for over 125 years since the house was built. So that you... When you drive in, you have to take a dog leg around... First of all, you have to maneuver through the columns, then you have to dog leg around the tree, which has been exciting for our children to learn how to drive. But it's really not very safe, and what we're worried about long-term is that either we have to cut down the oak tree or move the columns or something like that. So in doing that, we would be adding 72... We calculate it to be 72 additional square footage of coverage by...
Slightly... We didn't straighten it out completely because we thought that would add too much, but we tried to add just enough so that you didn't have to go like this and up over the roots of the tree and back around it. Because we practically keep Daniel's auto body in business at this point, and it's just gotten worse because it's continued to grow. It's a huge tree. It's bigger than this.
So if it... Just to show you some of the pictures. So this is as you're driving away from the house out to the street. And you can see the oak tree on the left, or my left, and the columns on the right. And this is a picture as you... The driveway goes semicircular under the port de chere, out to the other side of Fifth on the front part of the yard. And you have to maneuver around and come so you won't hit the tree. And as you can tell, the width between the columns is very narrow. This is probably a better picture. This is from Fifth Street, and that shows the columns and the tree. And then there's another... That tree over here died, so the second tree in the back is no longer there. This is from Google Maps, so it's a little bit older picture.
That one shows the best.
Yeah, and I think this kind of shows that as you drive in from Fifth Street, that's the...
That's what you're trying to do.
You're trying to miss the column, and then you've got to go that way. So what we want to do is move the drive to be more straight and move the column and...
Over a few feet.
Few feet, and landscape and take up the asphalt in front of the tree because the roots are underneath the asphalt.
So we're actually adding back some garden.
Between the alleyway and the driveway.
To maximize the amount... I mean, to minimize the amount we're asking for.
Uh huh. And in connection with this application, we've received overwhelming support from our neighbors. We have received 31 letters of the 33 that were delivered. We had three were returned to us when we sent out the notices, and we didn't go door to door. We just asked that people...
Thirty-one people sent mail... Took the time to mail them back to us, and a lot of people wrote about it. So we felt pretty good about that, that everybody thought it was a good thing.
Yeah, so we're gratified by our neighbor's support for this application, as well as the next one you're going to hear.
All right, well, let me ask... Does anybody have any questions about this request?
I'd just, you know, I'd be considering getting a horse and buggy.
There was actually a little...
There is a picture of a horse and buggy going through it.
Yeah.
That's a very reasonable request.
Yeah. All right. I'm gonna... Is there anything else you want to share with us? Otherwise, I'm going to close the case.
No, I think...
Well, let me ask you, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak either for or against this case? All right. Eric, can I have a board member... Close case, ask for a board member to make a motion here. Mr. Serman.
I move to recommend granting a request for 288... Whoops, am I on the right one here?
Yep.
288.25 square foot or 4.53 front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the modification of the existing legal non-conform structure, which is the circular driveway at 435 Lake Street in accordance with the plans submitted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Mr. Serman, your motion. You guys can have a seat while we talk.
Okay.
The hardship here is, you know, the age of when it was built, size, and, you know, it's tough to maneuver. You know, it looks very difficult. I didn't give it a try.
The only question that... And sorry to interrupt in the direction you're going, is Lisa, was there any thought put to, you know, this being like really a side yard as opposed to a front yard? And, I mean, is there much of a difference in how much coverage?
The coverage amount is the same, 30% in the front yard or 30% in the side yard adjoining the street. The difference would be that the side yard adjoining the street potentially would be shallower.
So not as much impact?
Uh...
Or more impact?
More impact.
More impact.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm not going to use that argument.
Okay.
All right, go on. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that.
So you're saying that that situation being considered a side yard is...
Is not advantageous.
Okay, got it. Okay. You know, I think they've done a good job preserving the home. It was built, you know, in the 1800s, and since they're considering just relocating the one column and widening it from a circulation standpoint, I can support it.
Mr. Boyer.
The only thing I would add is I'm looking at this as a reasonable correction for an existing practical difficulty, so...
Yeah.
At... I think it meets all the standards.
All right. Any other comments? No?
Did you want to elaborate on the horse and buggy?
Well, you know, we should always need to look at alternatives.
Obviously, Mr. Colling drew the ticket to be the comedian this evening. My... You know, the reason I brought up the question for Lisa was that if you look at the lot, you know, you've got 160 feet on Lake Avenue, 159 feet on Fifth Street. And the way that we determine front yard is the narrower or the fewer square linear feet is considered the front yard. And I was hoping that maybe that could help in your argument. Not that I think anybody really has a difficulty in what you're trying to achieve, nor do I. It just makes perfect sense. So I think I see how it meets the standards of review, and I think I'm going to support it as well. So let's take a vote.
Mr. Serman.
Yes.
Mr. Boyer.
Yes.
Mr. Colang.
Yes.
Ms. Norick.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Chairman Duffy.
Chair votes yes as well. So that's going to go as a positive recommendation of the Village Board. Their meeting's on the 8th of January. It'll be on their consent agenda, I'm sure. So that happens at the beginning of their meeting, and it'll just be voted yes, along with a whole lot of other things. I would suggest you come, just in case they ask any questions about it, but I doubt they will. If I could have one of you come up and sign one of these letters, it acknowledges some dates in your presence, and you can take the other one with you.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018 Z-50.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Boyer, for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
I as well.
Our next case is 2018 C-37, 425 Lake Avenue. This is a request for a 248.5 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation, a variation to permit a parking space in a required front yard, and a variation to permit the retention of an existing circular driveway upon demolition of the principal structure on a legal non-conforming structure.
Hello.
Hello, back again.
You guys look familiar. Hello. All right, 425, so now we're around the corner.
Next door.
Around the corner.
Yeah, right.
So around the corner from this driveway.
Right, exactly. So the situation is my wife and I, you know, we're not spring chickens anymore, and we want to remain in Willmet. And our home is a beautiful home, love to stay in it, but long-term, it's all stairs. There's no single level within our house. Our neighbor passed away last year, and her house went on the market. We decided to buy it. Its condition was not conducive to reletting it.
We had hoped to buy it and rent it until we were ready, had everything in place to build, but it...
She, you know, it needed repairs.
Couldn't be rented reasonably.
Cost-effectively, so...
So the expense to kind of modernize it enough to rent it, you deemed...
It was over $100,000.
Yeah, yeah. She had not touched it. I mean, there had not been any repairs for almost 50 years. So when we applied for a demolition permit, the issue came up about the front driveway. And the village said, "Well, you'll have to get a variance to retain the front driveway because it's a non-conforming structure or accessory." And we said, "Okay, we'd like to do that because we ultimately believe having the front driveway when we build a new house over there would be better for us as elderly people because there's no parking on Lake Avenue and it's dangerous to stop on the curb, et cetera."
And our intention is not to use that driveway as parking either now or for ourselves in the future. It is simply that as an, you know, we live in that... Since we live at 435, we know, especially on a holiday weekend, on a summer weekend, there is no parking for a couple of blocks. And so it would be our senior, our last home, hopefully, and as elderly people, no one could ever come visit us if we don't have some way for them to come drop us off or come visit us. And you're coming around the curve there, and there's no parking on that section of Lake Avenue. And it would be dangerous to stop there and get out of the car. And so this seems like a good solution. And we don't have any intention of parking cars there now because we obviously have a nice-sized driveway, you saw it, and we have no reason to park cars there. And in fact, we've put a fence... We've landscaped this whole thing as a kindness to our neighbors until something's done, also because one of them was going to have a wedding next door, and we felt bad. But so we put a fence up. It's not going to be used for parking.
I brought pictures of the fence, so...
And you would have a chance, when we submitted plans, to build another house, to say to us, "Take it up." It just doesn't make sense to us to take it up now, to go to the expense to take it up now.
And this is looking east on the lot. So what we've done is we've landscaped this property, we've added a lot more permeable surface than there was because the house and the garage and...
Are gone.
And the structures are gone.
Also redid the drainage and put in a rain garden so that, just to make it better for all our neighbors, that there would be drainage on the back of the property.
So what we did was kind of like a little pocket park as we decide what our ultimate plans are for the property.
All right, I just wanted to ask you a question. So you make the statement, "We want to save the circular drive so that when we build our house, we can have a circular drive." All right.
Or possibly the cuts, you know, the cuts. Because if I lose the driveway, I lose the curb cuts.
You lose both curb cuts, and then you have to reapply for a curb cut?
Right.
Yes.
Oh, that stinks. All right, because where I'm headed is you've got an alley. So in... As far as dropout pickup, I mean, you could have a driveway that runs from Lake Avenue all the way to the alley. You can accomplish the same goals without having a circular drive because people could drive through, come out the alley, and head out. And you could get dropped off at a side door or at a sidewalk to a front door.
But you have to get a variance to get the curb... Cut onto the... From Lake Street, as I understand it, from Lake Avenue.
So that would be... What you'd look at there is you could petition for that curb cut. I mean, someone got a curb cut on Lake Avenue by St. Joseph Church, where people are doing 40 miles an hour down Lake Avenue, even though the speed limit's 30. And it's because they wanted a bigger backyard, and the garage was in the backyard, and they were on a corner. And it was granted to them by... It was first village... Who approved it? Engineering approved it first? You know which one I'm talking about because I... It's the historic house that has the square box attached to the side of it at about 13th or 14th in Lake.
Oh, yes.
So engineering approved a driveway curb cut on Lake Avenue, got sent to us saying they approved it. And so, you know, we said, "Well, okay, we don't agree. We think that's a mistake." But where you are, it's a little... I'm sorry.
Well, and all our neighbors have driveways along there.
So that's another part of getting the approval for a curb cut, is that if you show that... Is there a percentage or a number of driveways that have to be on your block in order to say that you can have one too?
Not 100% sure.
I thought we came across that a couple of years ago.
It could be.
Like in the Cage area.
We're just hoping that you would let us wait until we have a plan.
Well, we certainly know.
Because you can... We'd have to come back. We'd have to apply again.
For a variance.
For a variance when we did the...
For the new structure.
For the new structure. We'd just like not...
Why would you need a variance for the new structure?
Well, as I understand it, in approval of the plans, they'd have to approve the...
So if you're building a new building, you shouldn't ask for any variances. You should be able to, you know, fit a new house within the envelope that you're allowed to, so you shouldn't have to ask for any variances.
We wouldn't have to ask for a variance again for the driveway. I just assumed we would.
No, if this request is approved through the process, it runs with the land, and...
I see.
You just have it, yeah.
You just have it. But if it's not approved, then they have to take the driveway out?
Yes.
And then the village would come in, put curbs in, and close up both those curb cuts until they decide to build a new house?
That is a good question. I'm not exactly sure.
That was my understanding.
I have a question actually for Lisa. So if they kept the house that they tore down and just renovated that house, would there be any issue with keeping the driveway?
No.
No. So if it was a renovation, then there's no issue with keeping the existing driveway?
Right.
So is the... Is there need... Do they have to ask for this because they've torn down the house? That's what's triggered it?
Right, that it would be demolition and new construction.
Well, they aren't proposing to construct right now.
Right, but the demolition, it's a non-conforming structure, and so...
So it means you have to demolish everything.
Exactly, right. Or request relief to keep it.
We didn't understand that when we demolished the... Because we had...
Well, yeah, we understood it when we got the demolition permit.
Well, that's true.
We didn't understand when we bought the property.
We had hoped to keep the garage in the... Because it was a garage with a living unit above it, and we had hoped to keep that for storage. And then the guys who were helping us with demolition said, "No, you can't keep that because it's a secondary structure."
Secondary structure.
And we've torn down the original structure. And, okay, so we did that, and there is no entrance from the driveway currently. There's just a... We put up a fence.
Yeah, it's a... There's no back entrance to the lot right now.
But it's not, I mean...
When you build, you're going to have a garage back there.
Well, probably.
Presumably, but I'm...
Probably, yeah.
Presumably?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little cold here not to have a garage of some sort.
So where we sit right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, all right? They've torn down the house, left the driveway. They have to remove the driveway by our code. They're here asking for relief not to remove the driveway because they'd like to have the opportunity to use the two curb cuts in the future. So if we say no... Now, granted, we're just making a recommendation to the Village Board.
I understand, right, right.
But if we say no, and the Village Board agrees with us, they have to take the driveway out, possibly both curb cuts get closed up. When they come to the village to say, "Okay, we're going to build a new house. We need a curb cut," they have to get a... Will they have to get a variance for the curb cut on Lake Avenue?
They would have to go through the driveway appeal process through the engineering department to get one or two, whatever curb cuts they want.
Right, okay. But they would have to get a variance for two, right? Because it would create... If they do the circle, it would create front yard parking.
They would need zoning relief to create this new if they wanted to do two curb cuts and a circular drive new.
Right. But if they can't... If they wanted just one curb cut, they wouldn't have to get a variance.
Most likely, they would be able to conform to the zoning with just one curb cut and one driveway.
Right, okay. If we say yes, well, they're just going to keep it, and everything's going to be fine. But so our decision is pretty clear, right? I mean, it's, are we okay with the two curb cuts and circular drive? Or are we not okay with parking and... Because they have no plan to build something. We don't know when they're going to build something.
Do you have any rough idea?
We've met with architects and argued with each other about which architect.
We're close to hiring somebody, but...
No, I just was curious.
And I would point out again, we have overwhelming support from our neighbors about this as well.
Right. So I have a couple of questions. So since you have eyes on, I drive by often, but during the summer, on weekends, hot days, how far... If, let's say, you have four people coming over, how far away would somebody, your estimate, since you're there, how far away would they have to park?
Maybe three blocks.
Three blocks, probably.
Because Washington only has parking on one side, and so that's almost always full. It's almost always full down Fifth.
Fifth is full, yeah.
But you've got a big driveway right now.
Yeah, we have a big driveway.
No, but I mean, if we move...
He's saying...
If you sold the house, sold their existing house, built their new house, we don't approve the existing driveway, what would happen?
Well, and that's why I suggested if you have a driveway that goes, you know, it's 100 and how many feet deep?
59.5.
Yeah, so if you had a driveway that ran front to rear, I mean, you could park more cars than if you had a circular drive in the front.
How long has that driveway been there?
Since 1940.
Some, it's been there a long time, yeah.
And, and we're less interested in, it's not the parking that we're interested in, it's that, that we could easily exit it, you know, safely, and it actually works really well.
It's a much safer way to get out than backing out on Lake.
Than backing out, because sometimes it's, there's so much traffic coming through and someone comes around this way, and it's just, it's just much safer, and.
I'm just curious, if you've been interviewing architects and you're, I mean, are you close? I mean, could they wait? Because in three months, they're going to have.
Well, how soon are you building a house? How soon are you planning on moving? You got to sell.
We have to price it out, and we have to go through all that.
Yeah, there's, you're years.
It could be a year before we had viable plans.
No, it's not imminent, I guess.
It's not imminent.
So Lisa, if this, let's say they decide not to build, and they're going to move down to Florida or whatever, and they sell the lots the way it is, does the new owner have to deal with now getting a variance, or does, if we approve something now, do they get to piggyback on that?
I think it would remain, again, because the variation is granted with the land.
The land.
But we're not going to Florida. Ever.
See, everything you're talking about is speculative.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
I understand.
So you could decide.
Yeah, it's, it's possible.
You don't want to be on Lake Street anymore. You know, we'd rather be somewhere else than that, and you sell it to somebody.
It's three blocks from Michigan Shore, so we always are going to be on Lake Street.
I'm still working, I'm still working, I'm not moving yet.
Um, yeah. It just, it would be expensive to do it, and I mean, I just presume in the end, like you say, okay, yeah, you could do a driveway all the way to the back, but, you know, maybe that's too much impervious surface, you know, you don't, we haven't calculated that out.
Is it, is it, I don't live on Lake Street, just drive down it, would you find it practical to pull in forward? Let's say you had a side drive, you pull in forward, I'm assuming you back out.
Which would be pretty dangerous.
It's, 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 busy street.
I mean, are you not going to use the garage that you're building?
I mean, I just don't know, I mean, I don't know what this is.
And so really, you'd come in and out of the alley, you wouldn't be coming in and out of the front.
Right, but we might build a garage underneath. That was one of the suggestions from one of the architects.
Right, no.
Was to leave the driveway as it was and just go underneath the house.
Mm-hmm.
So you'd have more land.
And then the garage floods, yeah. Sorry. Those 100-year rains that come every third year.
My mellow.
I've got a neighbor across the street that, I mean, I'm helping him, it seems like every third year with something.
With a 100, yeah.
It's a 100-year flood.
All right, talk to this guy about pumping the water out.
That's why you're moving?
On to Lake. All right, do we have any other questions for our applicant? No? All right, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Just that we have all those, all 31 people who think it's great that we want to do this.
Thank you.
Yeah, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? All right, so you know what, I'm going to close the case and ask if there's a member of the board that'd like to make a motion here. Mr. Boyer?
Regarding the case number 2018Z37, I move to authorize, I'm sorry, that's not, there it is.
No, Z37 was right.
No, I was reading the, the action following. Move to recommend granting a request for a 248.5 square foot front yard impervious surface, coverage variation, a variation to permit, a variation to permit a parking space in a required front yard, and variation to permit the retention of existing circular driveway upon demolition of a principal structure on a legal non-conforming structure at 425 Lake Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
All right, do I have a second? Mr. Coling, thank you very much. Mr. Boyer, your motion?
All right, so three requests, all having to do with the driveway. It's interesting, if they kept the house and rehabbed that existing house, we wouldn't be here, they wouldn't be able to retain the driveway. Since they tore it down, now they get caught in the zoning codes for, for new construction. I really didn't see a problem with the circular driveway as it existed with the previous house. It's a wide lot, 75 feet, it's larger than normal lots in Wilmatt. There are many wide lots on Lake Street, but in comparison to many lots in Wilmatt, it's a wider lot. So I don't think the circular driveway shoehorned on the lot. I think it's, it's a, it's a reasonable size. They have some practical difficulties with the conditions of parking in the area. They have the benefit of living by the beach and the lake, but they also have, you know, it's a detriment to live by the, the lake and the beach because of all the parking and all the, the traffic. Wilmatt allows parking in a lot of side streets and residential areas, which takes up the parking, unfortunately, for the residents on the public streets, and it causes congestion. I think I brought this up on another case where Lake Forest has a, a public beach and park that's similar to Gilson, and they only allow public parking on two streets, one's Westminster, I think, right? And that's only one side of the street, one side of the street and on Deer Path for a block. And then the rest of the parking is at the train parking lot a mile away. So they really limit the, the parking for non-residents. And the parking lot at the beach is for residents only.
Mm-hmm.
So it, in effect, deters people to visit the beach, which is great for the, great for the residents, right? And really, if you want to go there and you're non-resident, you really, really want to go there. We just, Wilmatt makes it super easy for people to utilize their beach. Okay, great. But that adds a detriment, added detriment to the neighbors that live close to the beach. So when I see cases like this, when they're looking for relief and parking, I'm more apt to allow the variance request, especially that it is, it is existing and they're not asking for something that's new. If they're asking for something that was new, a new driveway, I would be much less likely to approve this request. So if anybody is looking to, to make a new, create a new home on Lake Street in the future and wants a, a circular driveway in their front yard and it doesn't exist, I'm probably not going to vote for it. But on this one, I think there is a practical difficulty, and it is interesting, it kind of hinges on it's already existing. I think I can support it.
Mr. Coling?
You know, on the parking issue, I guess, if somebody's going to pull into the driveway, drop somebody off, and then leave to go park, they're going to park anyhow. And if they have to park three blocks away, they're parked three blocks away. Or they can come down the alley and drop somebody off. There's going to be a walkway next to the garage, and that way you don't have to, you know, you're not on Lake Street, and it's probably a safer situation to do that. I mean, there are some anomalies here, which, and timing issues it appears, although I don't think you're that close to building a new house, and if you did sell a lot, you know, I mean, we're approving something on a prospective basis, which may not even benefit you, but then would benefit somebody else. And I don't really see a hardship because, you know, you're not using the lot, you tore down the house, and you don't need the, a driveway there at all right now. So I guess I'm interested in what everybody else has to say, but I don't think it's as clear-cut, and I don't think that there's the hardship on this one that there was on the other ones.
Anybody else want to add anything?
Yeah, I would, if, if we had the request here, it would come to us, a lot that is 75 feet wide, and it is vacant, empty, and the proposal was to build a house with a circular drive as, as indicated, would we, which would require a variation based on impervious surface, would we approve that? And we've had a number of cases where we have been reluctant to do that. In this case, it's a 75-foot wide yard, lot, and not, you don't, one doesn't necessarily need to build a garage in the alley. You can, one can build a house with a two-car garage fronting Lake Street with a driveway that is significant to, you can park, not just in the garage, but outside the garage. So I, I don't understand why this is necessary, and I am reluctant to support it.
Anybody else?
I have a question for Lisa. Since it is a circular shape now and they're unsure where the garage would go, if they put a garage in the front and have to add additional driveway, they'd have to come back for variance because at that point, right?
Would, if it was increasing the coverage over, which presumably it would, assuming it's at the front yard?
Lot coverage, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you decided to put your garage in the front, you would have to come back?
Why?
Because it'd be over there in, in pervious coverage. You know, if they put, say they put, you know, it's a horseshoe, and if they decide to go straight on one of the areas with the garage, so really, you're only.
If you do an attached garage, yeah.
If you do attached garage with the garage facing the house, which is not as typical in that area, it's typical to have a garage off the alley.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess, you know, they've, they've lived in the area a long time, they've had a circular driveway for a long time, and I really feel that they bought this with the intention of maintaining the driveway, and they're very used to that habit, it's not something new. If, if somebody came to us new and saying we're building a house, we'd want it, I would not allow it. But in this case, I think it was good intentions, and if they would have just remodeled, they could have kept it. So I think they're caught in, in a little bit of a.
Yeah, I, you know, the good intention argument is, you know, I think gets us in trouble if you start to, you know, my feeling on this was, there's other ways to achieve the goal of having off-street parking, safe drop-off pickup, and still having a garage as well as space to turn around because, you know, if you, we had a case a week or two ago that they were getting rid of part of the driveway, but they wanted to keep that space in front of their house so they could do, you know, park because of the difficulty with the beach, and then they had that large area that would be in the backyard where they were turning cars around and, and driving out, but they no longer were using it. Remember? That was just a case or two.
Slipping the garage door.
Yeah.
Well.
So I think, so I think there's, I guess what my point was, that there's solutions to achieve what they want to achieve without having a circular driveway.
But if it's already, consider it's already existing, it's all done, it's all.
And, and I get it, and this is where, you know, I kind of have struggled with it myself is that, all right, they didn't, I would have turned the house down, I wouldn't have realized, you know, I couldn't keep the driveway the way it was. I mean, you know, you think that you're doing the right thing, and, but then code gets in the way.
Yeah.
But.
So that's why I say I think it was with good intention, if the.
Yeah.
If it was there.
But, you know, to, to Mr. Coling's point too, I mean, if we say yes on this, and then in two years, life changes, and they sell the lot, now we've approved it.
I know, that's.
And somebody else can do something that isn't that they, what they were planning on doing and the reason why we approved it.
Well, I guess I would say if we did approve it, I would put, what is, what do you call it, Lisa?
Recommending a condition.
A recommendation.
A condition.
A condition on it that, that if the house is sold, that it no longer, this variance is no longer in existence.
Nothing that can happen?
So it really is just.
Prior to construction.
Well, we tried to put a condition once before on something.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it came back, that was on the, the use, special use, yeah.
Would it be prior to, prior to construction then? If it's sold, if the lot's sold prior to construction?
Um, yeah, I think so.
Right, because it, ultimately, a house is going to be built there.
Yeah, but yeah, everybody's life changes, who knows?
I think the condition is if the lot is sold, period.
It goes away.
It goes away. Because if you.
If the vacant lot is sold.
If.
If the vacant lot is sold.
If the vacant lot is sold.
Vacant lot is sold, all right. But, but you know what, if you've built a house there, then it becomes legal non-conforming. So in 20 years, if you sell the house, it's not like the variance goes away because you've already built the house and it's, and you're using it, so it's legal non-conforming. So that's why I say just the sale.
Right.
Because if they sell.
Of the vacant, of the vacant lot.
Doesn't matter if it's vacant or not.
I don't know how you enforce that, you have to put something on title in order to, for somebody to know that, you know, down the road. I don't know, do you keep the type of records that somebody's going to be able to flag that in five years or not?
It can be challenging.
Yes.
So the condition can be challenging, is what you're pointing out.
But remembering that there was a condition attached is going to be challenging unless it's on title. I don't see how you'd do that.
So you're saying the condition wouldn't work in any case?
I don't, there might not be any remembrance that there was a condition.
Yeah.
I'm going to get my interest here, but zoning orders, everybody's on notice, regardless of the records.
Well, you know, again, let's say five years down the road, you still haven't built the house and you decide to sell it. Lisa's not working here anymore, John Adler's moved on, nobody that's been involved is still around to remember that it was there.
Nobody reads the minutes.
Nobody pays attention to us.
Just comment, if, whether there's a driveway back to a garage, or if there's a garage that is built as part of the house, front-loaded, there would be no requirement for a variance. It's just, there would be no impervious surface coverage variation, none of these would apply. So they can.
You're saying that this would not apply?
No, because this is all going to go away.
I would say.
Oh, if they, oh, I'm saying, if they keep the circular and add that.
Then there's a variance.
No, no, that is a variance. I'm just saying that, I'm not in support of keeping the circular driveway because it's not necessary.
All right, I want to make sure that I had shared everything that I, yeah, I guess my whole thing was that there's other solutions to this. So I understand that they're caught up, and I feel bad that they're caught up because, as Bob called it, good intentions. But this is, in a way, they've created their own issue by tearing the house down, and now it's considered new construction. And you can't, you know, can't, you can't retain.
I don't know if they created, I really don't, I don't know if they created their own issue in this case. I know there's other cases where people create their own issue.
Right.
But the, it exists, so we can't pretend that it doesn't.
But, but what you're supposed to do when you, you know, you tear down a house or you tear down a building, you're supposed to then conform.
Yeah, but if you bought a house.
No, I understand that, that's why we're here, that's why we have zoning, you know, zoning codes, and we have zoning appeal process, I get that. So, but what I'm saying is.
I know what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying, it exists, we can't, we can't hide from that fact that it, it exists. And it would have existed if they just rehabbed the house. Not saying they should have, you know, it's not one of those things, you should have done that, not saying that at all. But if they, if they did, or somebody else bought it and rehabbed the house, the driveway that exists would exist, so.
It would be legal non-conforming.
It would be legal non-conforming.
Yeah.
And it serves, it serves a purpose, and I know there's other solutions here, but I don't know if any of those solutions are any better, or it helps the applicant in any way. So if it's a side drive that causes impervious surface issue, very, you know, pervious surface issues, the neighbor, then you have, then if you pull in straight, you have to have some sort of turnaround area so there's additional concrete, because really, backing up on, on Lake Street, that's challenging for anybody, all right? So I don't know if any of the, any of the additional, any of the other solutions are any better.
Can we put a condition on it even if we vote it up or down or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, you can make a motion to add a condition, vote on the condition, and then vote on the.
But vote on it the way it is, but then add a condition?
No, she said.
I think, I think add, vote on the condition first.
Well, if some of the people don't want to add the condition, then.
Right, then it doesn't, that's, but that's why you vote on the condition first, you guys say what the condition is, we vote on whether we want it or not, and then we move on to the whole case.
Because I don't like the idea that they could sell it, and it's, it's a benefit to have that.
I'm conflicted too. I mean, we've had a lot of petitioners come before us wanting to do things in their side yards or where they're on corner lots where we've said, no, because you've got an alley, and that's the purpose of an alley is to, you know, put your garage there, do your parking there.
Right.
But this is a really busy, tough area because of, you know, its proximity to the beach and the heavy summer traffic, and just in general, that corner, right, you know, right at Fourth and Lake is.
I just think when you purchased it, you know, you can go back and say, well, they should have looked and done this, but if you went to purchase that, you'd say, hey, this driveway's great, I think we'll keep this.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, yeah, it was there, there's plenty of people who've done things that come after the fact because they didn't think of it just as, you know, the applicants here didn't think of it, or, you know.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't, I mean, I don't think I would have thought of it either, but we've had plenty of other situations like there was, people didn't think of things, or their builder or whatever said, you don't need a permit, or you don't need to worry about that. And then, you know, it's reasonable for them to believe a guy who, you know, that's what he does for his living.
Sure, you can put that air conditioner there.
No problem.
All right, so have we all kind of gotten out what we feel? I mean, obviously, some of us are torn, and there's six of us, I think we've got it all, so why don't we, why don't we take a vote? Everybody's okay with it, ready to vote? All right.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Coling?
No.
Ms. Norg?
No.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair's going to vote no as well. So that's going to go as a negative recommendation to the village board. Now, what's going to be different from your last case is that this is going to be on their agenda to be discussed because it's a negative recommendation. They'll have read our minutes, and sometimes we get calls from the board members asking us to clarify some thoughts and, and why we took a perspective on it. And so you'll get to re-present your case to the village board, and you'll need five affirmative votes to overturn the negative recommendation. They are the end-all, be-all. We just apply the code and make a recommendation. So don't feel like this is the end of the road. All right. And again, I need one of you to sign one of the documents up here and take the other with you. with you.
I, I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018-Z-37.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
And these are for you. Thank you, old manager.
You okay, need some cigarettes? You ready?
Hi, are you?
Alrighty, we are.
Okay. Our next case is 2018-Z-58, 215 Ninth Street. This is a request for a 4.83-foot side yard air conditioner setback variation to permit the retention of an air conditioner unit.
Hey, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Neil Tato Ellis, I, my wife and I have been residents of Willmett for 10 years, we've lived at 215 Ninth Street for four years, so. What we are looking to do is add a ductless, wall-mounted air conditioner to our walk-up attic space, third-floor space, when we bought the house, it was finished, one-bedroom, bath. Since our kids have grown, and our family is growing, we are using this space more. It currently has one duct running up to it, it's just not enough.
So it says on here, "Retention of," so it's already installed, isn't it?
It is installed, so I had Four Seasons, I had a number of contractors come to the house, the ultimate decision was, get this ductless, wall-mounted unit, given the size of the space, you don't need anything major, so. Four Seasons came out, they did not think it needed a permit, obviously, I think according to some complaints, it does, according, you know, to be fair, on the website, on Willmett's website, the work that requires a permit is a central air conditioning unit, this technically isn't a central air conditioning unit. So I think that, in their mind, they install this, you know, having called them about this, I don't think, from my perspective, there isn't, there's never been, I'm fine pulling a permit. You know, I think from their mind, they haven't had to pull permits for these units in other towns, it's behind a structure on the house, I feel like they thought that, because it hasn't been required in other towns, it's behind a structure, it's on the side, they don't need to pull a permit, obviously, the condenser is the issue. So here's...
Let's ask one quick question, so it's really just to cool the attic space?
To cool the attic space.
The other space is already cooled with a different system?
Yeah, so we have a central AC system.
And where is that condenser?
That is on the south end of the house. This condenser's on the north end of the house, and the reason for that, for the placement is, according to the specs of the unit, it has to be mounted on a flat, vertical surface. That surface is the dormer of our walk-up staircase going all the way up. It also requires, the unit also requires a certain maximum length for the coolant line.
Could you, could you, on the, could you put the 1.3, 1.3 on the, on the flat surface?
You want a survey? Is that what you're asking for?
And Lisa, why is doing that?
The condenser is, the one that serves the rest of the house?
You're looking for the plat?
Yeah. Has Four Seasons done work in Willmett before?
They have.
Have they pulled permits in other, other air conditioning installations?
Not all the time.
Or they have?
They have, they have, for sure.
Alright.
Eventually.
So not always when they install, but, hmm, they're on that list.
Which list are they on?
The naughty list.
So...
Okay, I think we're going to get it.
It'll pop up in a second, yeah.
So the, the only area they had the vertical surface was the dormer that was on the north side of the house? There was no other dormers?
No, there's no other dormers, it's a gable roof, so that, you know, the, the roof, the ceiling and walls are pitched in the attic.
I noticed the refrigeration is run on the side of the building, down the roof, around the gutter, all the way down.
Straight down, right, and that also allows for the drainage properly.
For the condensate, yeah.
Right. So...
So where is the...
The, the current condenser for the central AC is, call it right around here.
Okay.
This unit is...
And that is in the appropriate location?
Correct. Correct.
You got the setback sense.
Okay.
This unit, the unit that has been installed is right here, they, very, it's five feet two inches from the lot line.
Why could you install this, the same location as the other one?
Because the coolant line would have to be, would be too long, it wouldn't run efficiently.
Yeah, what is the restriction usually, it's like 50 to 75 feet?
I think it's 60 feet.
Okay.
And then, in order to mount this wall, this unit though, the coolant line would have to run underneath the floorboards, or in the ceiling, all the way around.
So if you, if you installed it the same way, you'd have the refrigerant line going on the...
It would have to come.
It would be there, and would have to go over the ridge of the...
Over the ridge and down, and then, God forbid, something happened, and we had to replace that coolant line, now we're looking at ripping everything out, just to maintain it.
So the placement really was determined by the refrigerant line requirements?
Right. This unit is extremely quiet, it's extremely efficient, this is the unit, right there on the side, it's behind that, that's the bump out for my walkway, the fence obviously is the lot line.
Are there bedrooms up on that floor?
Yes, there's a, there's a bedroom up there.
So you would have it running in the evening, then?
Yeah, I mean, you know, since we've been using the space more, that one duct running up there is just, it's balmy, you know, at, to put it lightly, without...
Consider locating it by the end of the porch?
Again, I think that that, I think that that space would, it would have to run up along a long roof, single-story roof, then up again, we, the length would be, it would be too long for it to run efficiently.
I think due to the size of the condenser, that it probably limits the run, if you have a larger unit, you know, a larger square one for your whole house...
Right, this...
It has more strength for the refrigeration line.
Correct.
But for this, I don't...
This unit is about 7,600 cubic square, you know, cubic inches, whereas opposed a normal, a normal condenser, central AC condenser is 50,000 cubic square inches, so pretty powerful.
Whoa, is this one again?
This one is 7,600 cubic inches.
Okay.
Pretty small, it's 31 and a half by 11 and a half deep, by 21 inches tall, runs at 49 decibels, comparable, quieter than a dishwasher, pretty quiet, as I said earlier, it's extremely efficient.
So this runs, let me try to understand, this runs the, to an air handler, in the, in where?
In the attic space, which is, it's installed on the vertical dormer wall for our staircase, and it cools the attic space.
And the, the issue is distance, 75 feet, as I understand, is sort of the maximum distance you should have...
The maximum distance, I believe, is 60 feet, for the coolant line.
For this size unit?
For this particular...
Yeah.
Model?
Yeah.
And the 60 feet could not be placed anywhere else, assuming that was the limit?
No.
Economically.
Is that fair?
Economically.
Efficiently and economically, I would say efficiently first, economically second. This plat is a little old, so, oh, actually, it's a little old, there's a bump out to the house, there's a patio, so putting it directly behind the home, I don't know how that's physically feasible.
Any other questions? No? Are you okay, Ryan? Do you have anything else? Okay. Is there anything else you want to share with us? I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience?
If you guys are comfortable with the information I provided.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak either for or against this case? Alright, seeing no one, I'm going to close the case, ask if there's a board member that'd like to make a motion here. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
I move to recommend granting a request for a 4.83 side yard air conditioner setback variation request to permit the retention of an air conditioner unit at 25 Ninth Street in accordance with the plans submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Colling, thank you so much. Mr. Sherman, your motion?
I think that it's a fairly small request, because we're looking at a air conditioner that's just required just for the third-floor space, and I understand the constraints, and as an architect, I would not have recommended putting it on the other side due to the length of the refrigeration line. I think that would just cause the system to not work as efficiently or as well, so the decibel level is, you know, quiet, it's from past projects, we know that that's less than the level that we're talking at right now, we're talking at a level about 70, and that's only at 49, so, I, I understand the concern, but I don't think it would've been practical to put it on the other side, so I can support it.
Mr. Colling?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I think the hardship is the requirements of the wall inside the house and outside, and the length of the line, you know, we've, we have approved variances for air conditioners, smaller, I mean, where the air conditioning unit or the condenser outside is closer to the, to the lot line.
And louder, too.
And louder, and, you know, we were talking, what was it, last week, a couple of weeks ago, about a 70-decibel level generator, this is 49, so, I, I think there is a hardship here, and I can support it, it's the standards that are being...
Anybody else want to add anything? No? Yeah, when I read this case, I thought it was a really reasonable location, it's shielded, you know, from not only the street, but it's, you've got some foliage along the fence that's there too, that helps shield it from the neighbor, and, you know, granted, you should've gotten a permit and a variance for this, but it, this is a, not a full-size condensing unit, this is really kind of a supplemental unit, and so therefore, that's why I think it's quieter, you know, I think we should give it a little more of a consideration to, to be within the gray area, like we're going to call it, so, I, too, I thought this was pretty easy to support, I think it meets all the condition, or the standards of view as well. So why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Colling?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Norg?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well, so that's going to go as a positive recommendation to Village Board, meeting's on January 8th, it's going to be on their consent agenda, which happens right at the beginning of the meeting, if you guys wanted to come, it's probably best if one of you come anyway, just in case, but I doubt they will pull it off consent agenda, it should go pretty easy. If one of you could come up and sign up here and take...
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018-Z-58.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Colling. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Alright.
Our next case is 2018-Z-59, 1515 Sheridan Road, this is a request for a special use for a medical clinic mall to permit the operation of an optician's office, Big City Optical.
Hey, welcome.
Hello, how are you?
I'm well, you?
Good, good, thank you.
Excellent, you look like you just got back from somewhere warm.
I was in Cuba a couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah?
And I kind of, I stayed tan even in the winter for some reason, I don't know.
Lucky you.
I'm just one of those lucky people, but yes, I went to Cuba, so I was extra tan when I got back.
Yeah, how's Fidel's brother?
You know, he was peaceful, and no one knows where he's at, so, he's living somewhere there, but didn't run into him at all.
Sequestered, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so we've got Big City Optical.
Yeah, so, thanks everyone for taking the opportunity to listen to my request for a special use for space 34 of the Plaza de Lago, so currently, back in October, yes...
And you're Michael?
I'm Mi- I'm sorry, I'm Michael Kogalis, and I'm one of the owners of Big City Optical.
Thank you.
Thanks. We currently, two months ago, we purchased the Plaza de Lago Vision Center from Dr. Richard Schrenzle, who's been operating there for the last 35 years, in one space or another, I believe in the current space since 1991, and, you know, as we've been doing that, we also were seeking out a location that we thought would essentially kind of meet the needs of our current and future clients, and so, within the Plaza de Lago, we had decided to move to space number 34. Space number 34 is the space that's between Burr Hops and Starbucks, so it's a spot that's been vacant for what I believe is the last five years, there used to be a pharmacy there, and that pharmacy left five years ago, so now it's just a really fishy-smelling, literally fishy-smelling, empty space on the corner there. Oh, yeah, it's already changed, actually, so, yeah, the smell is gone, but we're planning on getting even more aggressive, but, yeah, so, so, long story short, you know, through the process, we determined that we required a special use, because since we employ a doctor, which is continuing to be Dr. Schrenzle, since we employ a doctor, we're required to request a special use for medical use, and I'd just like to share a little bit about our business, today, 90% of our revenues are ultimately generated from people who actually purchase a product, they buy sunglasses, eyeglasses, contact lenses, so for all intents and purposes, we're very heavy retail, and then, part of our pathway to getting to that retail sale is that we have a doctor that's there that also manages, you know, the eye health of clients, and Dr. Schrenzle's been doing it at the Plaza de Lago for the last 35 years, and so, I, I went through the, the list, you know, of, of items that are considered as factors when considering approvals, approving a special use from code 5.3, 5.3.e, and so I just wanted to quickly go through this for all of your benefit. First of all, the Plaza de Lago was purchased about a year ago from a new management company, and they've been investing very heavily in really trying to attract new tenants, from what I understand, we're the first new tenant that has signed on with the Plaza de Lago, and our, we believe that our, our retail medical space is in alignment with the goals of the shopping center as it stands today, we're, you know, we're very commercial, I mean, we're very retail, there's, you know, we try to carry the most relevant current eyewear selection for people that want to go shopping, and, or just get a great pair of sunglasses to go to Cuba, right, so, they have lots of options. We also want to stress that we believe that this is an enhancement to the public safety, currently, the Plaza de Lago Vision Center operates from space number seven, and space number seven currently does not offer an ADA bathroom, does not offer handicap parking near the location, and the new space, we will have obviously a fully ADA-accessible facility, including a bathroom, we have a handicap parking spot that's directly next to the facility, it's already there, so, and then as far as curbs, there are no curbs to prevent the use from someone using a walker, a wheelchair, whatever they might need in order to gain access to our facility, so it's an actual improvement. You know, the, the current property and the location is currently zoned commercial, so there's no change as far as that zoning, we're in a commercial space already, and, you know, we don't believe that it would be injurious to the use or the enjoyment of other properties in the neighborhood. All of the properties are currently developed, so in the strip center that we're in, all of them are occupied, we will be vacating space number seven, which will give the management company the ability to rehabilitate that space, and repurpose it for another business, potentially even be able to attract another tenant that's got larger needs, because the spot directly next to seven is vacant currently, and so, we could add to the square footage of that, giving them more flexibility if they needed it to rent it out. they needed it to rent it out. We don't believe that the property values in the surrounding area will be impacted. Access and parking already exists. Since we're operating as an optical practice today, we don't believe that there will be any significant change to the traffic patterns to the shopping center where there'd be more or less folks coming in. I think it's just a matter of taking one business and moving it to another location. We believe that will be, that the proposed special use will provide a valuable service to the area residents, as it has for the last 35 years. And then the special use, you know, essentially allows us to occupy, I think, a space that, you know, has had some real potential. And so we're able to help bring it to that potential as a result of relocating to the new space. With that, that's all I had.
Are you going to be providing any services that aren't already being provided at the other location?
Yeah, so actually, we're enhancing the services. So currently, the doctor uses equipment that's probably about 30 years old. So the entire lane for the doctor is becoming a full digital lane. So essentially, that allows for greater levels of accuracy, better management of eye health. So just overall, it is a direct, it's an immediate improvement with respect to that, as well as our systems, we are paperless. So from just an information protection standpoint, there are no files with our system today. So we essentially do everything digitally and, you know, with the exception of an information form that a client fills out, that gets shredded at the end of the day and all the records are actually, they're preserved electronically and in the cloud versus via a paper, a paper file, as what was, had been done in the past.
How many employees are you going to have?
So today, we have a total of three employees, the doctor, the manager, and then our head optician, who's been there the last 25 years, she's actually here with me today, Gail Higgins, she'll continue to be an employee with us.
All right, so three at any one time, and then how many customers do you anticipate being in the space at any one time?
Well, I would say immediately. It would be very similar to what we're experiencing now, which is, I, I haven't personally been there where I've seen more than one to two customers there at the same time. You know, I think that if our services are viewed as valuable, obviously, the goal would be to, to grow that, the customer base. But we also think that, you know, being located next to Starbucks is actually helping us because there's quite a few residents that come and spend a significant amount of time there. And, you know, we believe that they may, they're already there, they will probably decide to check us out. So the ultimate goal would be to grow the business. But day number one, I'd say it's probably a couple of, few employees and then one or two people coming in at the same time.
When you say you want to grow the business, I'm assuming you'd rather grow the, the retail side of it, since that's 90% of your revenue.
Yeah, well, I think what will happen is we will get more patients that will have eye exams annually, and then we would in turn grow the retail business at that larger percentage, just because we have other locations and it's 90-10, essentially, 90% retail and 10% medical.
What would be the maximum amount of visits? There has to be a number that, that you're at capacity, where you can't, the doctor can't see any more people.
Yeah. That's a good question. I, I would say that if, if we doubled the business and we had rather than one to two people there at, at a single time, we had two to four people there, that would probably bring us up to where other optical practices in the North Shore perform today. But it's, I guess it's kind of a guess, because with us, if, if we have three or four clients that come in that have real needs, that could be your entire day. Whereas if you just, if you have a client that is only coming in for an exam, that might be, you know, that, that could, that could be, you could barely earn any money on that day or, or a very low revenue. So it just depends on the type of client that comes in. If it's just medical, then the opportunity is kind of the basic exam fees. And then in some cases, it turns into something that's a little bit more extensive. So like, you know, the one or two people that we see at any one time, maybe one of them buys a pair of glasses and then the other person is just there for the exam.
That's about an hour, right?
Actually, exams are scheduled in 20-minute increments, but, you know, we don't rush clients, so there, what I've seen is that there are clients that will come in and visit with Gail and Richard for maybe an hour. And they will talk to them and we'll take the time to kind of help them find what they're looking for. And then there's clients that have already started coming in that are new and they're just like down to business, like, I need my exam, I want to get out of here. So it just depends on the type of relationship that has been created.
For an hour, that's about the max.
Yeah, two, you're right. You, you would not have, because we do 20-minute increments and we have one doctor, you would not have more than three actual patients per hour.
Any other questions for our applicant? All right, seeing no more questions. Anything else you want to share with us, or?
No, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the case. All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the case. You can have a seat. I'm going to ask if there's a member of the board. I'm going to give it to Mr. Schneider. Your motion, sir.
In case number 2018-Z-59, move to recommend granting a request for a special use for a medical clinic small to permit the operation of an optician's office, Big City Optical, at 1515 Sheridan Road. In accordance with the plan submitted, the zoning board must determine if the special use should run with the land or with the use. I recommend the use.
Use, correct. Is there a second? Mr. Sermon, second. Thank you very much. Mr. Schneider, your motion.
Well, I, I think they're moving from one space to another. I think this is a, a good use for that space, which is really, I don't know what else you can do with it. Narrow, 13 feet and very long. So I think it's, it's an appropriate use for the space.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's a good use for the space. Being next to Starbucks is going to be a benefit for them, for their business to, I wasn't even aware there was the optical shop there previously, but I don't shop that much in, in there, but I think it will help out and it'll be a good addition to the, to the mall.
Any other comments? No? Nothing yet? Yeah, I thought this was pretty straightforward as well. You know, you're already there, you're moving space, you're getting more visible. I mean, it's a benefit for you, it's a benefit for the owners. I see it also as a benefit for the community. So I, too, thought this met the standards of review and I thought I would support it. So why don't we take a quick vote?
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. So that's going to go as a positive recommendation, Village Board. You've heard it a couple of times tonight. Meeting's on the 8th of January. It'll be on the consent agenda. I still suggest you show up just in case someone has any questions for you. I doubt they will. It'll happen at the beginning of the meeting, like within the first 10 minutes. You're in, you're out, and you're moving forward. So if you could come up and sign one of these for me?
Move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018Z59.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ms. Norick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Our next case is 2018Z55, 405 Linden Avenue. This is a request for a special use for an animal hospital to permit the operation of a veterinary office.
Barbara Royal, are you here?
Okay.
Going once, going twice. We are going to continue this case? Is that how we're going to handle it?
We could put it at the end of the meeting if you want to see.
All right, well, we will see if she shows up. Why don't we move to the end, give her a second chance, just in case she's watching on TV and scrambling over here right now. All right. I am going to make an assumption that our later rivals are the...
The tribes.
Obara and likes. Yep, all right. I need to swear you guys in. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say I do. Thank you for raising your right hand as well. I forgot to ask you to do that.
So our next case is 2018Z53, 819 Michigan Avenue. This is a request for a 975.55 square foot total floor area variation, an eight-foot height variation, a one-story height variation, a 0.34 foot stairway housing height variation, and a variation to modify the approval granted by ordinance 2016-0227 to retain a flat roof over an addition and a stairway housing on the legal non-conforming structure.
All right, welcome back.
Thank you.
Before you start, I'm going to ask, are these for me or is this for Lisa?
No, that's just information.
For me or for Lisa?
Yeah, sir.
For everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
I'm Sarah Like.
And I'm Deanna Bera.
Husband Dan. We've been Willmett residents for 18 years and, as you mentioned, we are back again. Over two and a half years ago, we received approval for, from the Village Board for a variance, and we are now back on several additional variances that stem from two specific issues. But before I get to those in more detail, I would like to provide some background on how and why we decided to build out the attic space after the first variance, which I understand from Ms. Roberts has been the subject of some questions. So if you would appreciate that, I would be willing to spend a couple of minutes just walking through that background.
Sure.
So when we were before this board and the Village Board back in 2016, we said that we wanted a family room. That was really important to us on the first floor, which is pretty common in modern homes and it would be much more useful to us than space on the third floor of the house that we had just bought. And as you may recall, this is a 1936 home that had, had very little renovation done to it. It was sold as a potential tear down and we knew that there would be substantial work ahead. We wanted to save it, absolutely, but we wanted to do that if we could get modern amenities like a family room. The main challenge was the attic because as built, the house had exceptionally high ceilings in the attic space, 12 feet. And regardless of how that space was used, it counted as FAR, going into all of this. New houses avoid that issue because even though everybody builds to the, to the maximum height limit, they build higher first and second floors and then have, you know, shorter ceiling space in the attic. So we said before both this board and the Village Board that addressing the attic was something that, you know, that we obviously had considered as we, as we were deciding what to do, but that it was our understanding that it was going to be very difficult and complicated and expensive to address that attic space. It was not built originally as a living space. It was not structurally sound. There were no front or back windows. There were just some very small side windows. And there was no access at all other than a pull-down ladder and no real, like, easier conceivable place to put the stairs. For example, some of the problems that were raised were that the joists were undersized and attached to undersized rafters with a friction connection up and off the load-bearing walls. And our architect came with us to those meetings and he confirmed under oath, you know, all those kinds of issues. So after the Village Board hearing, we spent months putting together plans, working in far more detail with the architect, and we met with five different structural engineers to address a host of, of issues and, and problems that were arising as we really kind of dug into what the options were going to be going forward. And ultimately, we were advised that if we ever wanted to make that attic space usable, it would involve...
Let me just, I just, you met with five structural engineers?
We did.
For, if you weren't going to finish the attic, what was the purpose of meeting for the structural engineers?
This, this was in between Village Board approval and submitting the permits. So we were essentially trying to explore what the possibilities were and how involved it was going to be.
And we knew that there were other issues. As we, you know, began working more closely in the house, we knew that there were other issues, such as there were no headers over any of the windows, which was going to be a problem going forward. It just had, had been built that way in the past.
That's unrelated to the attic.
Yeah. But, but, I mean, there was, were reasons that we had to construct, you know, consult with a structural engineer in order to, to figure out how to address, you know, those kind of issues and, and other things.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just the main point is, we, you know, once getting approval from the Village Board, we were looking at the house as a whole, see what can and cannot be done. And, you know, ultimately, what we submitted was, you know, based on some initial consultation.
So I, I just want to be clear. I mean, your comment just was that you consulted structural engineers about headers over the windows.
Yeah.
Well, we consulted, I mean, we consulted.
That's completely unrelated and I, that's a secondary issue. I mean, the, the issue at hand with the attic really was the, the joists and the rafters, which were both undersized. The, the joists were connected to the rafters up off the load-bearing wall, exterior load-bearing walls. You know, ultimately, what we were advised was that we would have to sister every joist and rafter, which is, you know, what we did, as well as replace the, you know, the, the flooring. We had to do a tongue-in-groove flooring, three-quarter inch glued to the, to the, to the joists, to kind of form a composite, you know, member. I mean, the long story short, there's a lot of work involved with making that attic, you know, usable.
So, so your, your impression when you left the Village Board meeting was the Village Board said, yeah, go ahead and build out the attic?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yes, I would say that. My impression was that...
My impression was that they were not prohibiting us from doing that. And it still remained of far less interest than getting a first-floor family room. But they had not put any condition on it and we felt like we could explore what the options were as we were looking at a variety of things with the house and also wanted to make sure the house was going to be structurally sound, kind of irrespective of whether or not we did anything with the attic. We wanted to just, I mean, we, you know, we needed to have a further structural assessment. There were some issues that we were seeing. I mean, I know, I probably shouldn't have sidetracked with the header issue because I, I was not focused on that particularly, but, but there were other things like that that were coming up during that time period.
Yeah.
So I just, I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So in the minutes with the Village Board, I, the Village Board didn't say that you couldn't specifically build out that space.
Right.
But they did say that based on what you said you weren't going to.
Well, what, what...
Because that's the way I read it, too, that you, in the minutes, you didn't, you know, oh, we, we're not going to do it because, you know, it's going to cost too much money and we're so, therefore, would you give us the variance to add on to the back of the house?
Yeah, I think, we should have clarified, probably. And I think, you know, I think what we did was go to the Village Staff and, and ask them and so...
But we based our decision on the variance on what your testimony was during it and then...
And, and at that time, we were focused on the first-floor family room.
But you had already done some investigation because you knew that the attic was not suitable.
That's true.
So you had to have somebody look at it.
Yeah, we, we knew that...
So you did have a consultant.
We knew from our architect.
We, we knew that something had to be done. What we didn't know after zoning board approval was how expensive it was going to be, you know, if we could find a contractor to do it.
But you had the opportunity to do that before you came...
Before the zoning board?
Before the variance, you could have done that.
We, we could have. We, we...
You already talked to a structural engineer at that point that told you how expensive it potentially could be.
Well, actually, I think, I think you actually misspoke. We didn't actually talk to a structural engineer before the zoning board.
Well, you talked to an architect that was...
Yeah, yeah, we, we had an architect. We did not just talk to a...
Architects can design homes.
We did not talk to, we did not talk to a structural engineer until afterwards.
You don't need a structural engineer to be, build a home.
Right. And that's, that's, can I, can I just, I think you kind of misrepresented what, we did not talk to structural engineers between the time we spoke to the zoning board and the Village Board. We spoke to, to engineers and architects. And I, I spoke to architects and engineers that worked for me. I'm a program manager and I've got guys that work at AECOM and HNTB and it was kind of an internal, you know, just assessment of what they thought and then we went out to residential guys, you know, as we're getting closer to the permit process. But none of that happened between the zoning board and the Village Board. All that happened after, after the Village Board to the permitting stage. And so, you know, we just didn't know, we, we didn't know what we could or could not do and how much it was going to cost until, until we, until the Village Board said, yes, you know, you can keep, keep this house, we want you to save this house. They did not put any stipulations on saving this house. I mean, I think our point with the family room got a little bit jumbled in terms of, I mean, I think our point with the family room got a little bit jumbled in terms of, it wasn't a family room for an attic. It was just, we were simply saying that we were getting penalized from putting a family room on our property because of the attic. The lot coverage is still not an issue. It's not an issue today, it never was. It's just simply, as Sarah said, it was a distribution of the floors. I mean, the front door is low, the ceilings on this first floor are, you know, higher than maybe some homes, but not as high as what you'd have in a new home. The second floor, you know, some of that height is actually coming from the attic. That's why those rafters are, you know, connected to, the joists are connected to the rafters, because your last foot of the second floor actually is into your attic. But I guess essentially, I think our point was that we felt like because we had the lot coverage, and we wanted to modernize the home with the family room, we didn't wanna be penalized for an extra-high attic space, which...
Mr. Berra, you testified under oath in front of this committee...
Yes.
...that to use the third floor other than storage...
Yes.
...was not structurally feasible.
At the time, at the time, it was not, and that was absolutely the case. It was not structurally feasible at the time, because we had, we had two-by-six rafters and two-by-six joists, not on the load-bearing walls, with, you know, slats.
So, understanding that that was the current condition, but in making that statement, you were implying that you weren't gonna use that space?
I was implying it was unusable now without great expense and time, which surely has proven to be the case. I mean, it's taken us so many years now to get to this point, and our point was, it's not usable now, and it's gonna take a lot of time and effort and money to make it usable.
Mr., the architect said at the time, they would have to remove the entire roof.
I'm not sure what he meant by that, to be honest.
Is he here?
He's not. And obviously, if you removed the roof, you would void the variance anyway, so I don't know, I don't know what he means by removing the roof. I gotta be honest with you there. We went to great lengths to save the slate everywhere we could. I mean, that was one of the, you know, the premises for keeping this house was, you know, the rafters, the underlayment, the slate itself were, you know, like it was when it was built, and so we didn't wanna disturb that anymore than we had to.
Another question. What is the height of the basement?
Height of the basement is eight feet.
You testified that it is seven feet to the bottom of the joists.
Well, it's eight feet now, because we've lowered the floor, 'cause that was part of these structural improvements as well, because we actually poured new footings to put in new columns to project up to the attic. So, and it was kind of the motivation for me. I really didn't wanna disturb the basement, but the benefit of...
You dug out the floor of the basement?
We removed, we removed the floor, and we lowered it down to the footer height. We didn't go terribly deep, but we went a little deeper, but really, the motivation was to pour, you know, better footers for the columns to project up to the attic space, and then get an extra foot out of the basement.
The original drawings that you submitted for the basement show that there was only gonna be like two steps, and now I believe there are many more than that.
So, between the permit set?
Yeah, the permit set. So you did not, from my perspective, you didn't follow the plans?
Actually, I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to check.
I don't know if you're familiar, you're in the construction industry, and you do commercial work, correct?
I do, yes.
So is there a reason that the drawings never showed and still to date don't show any revisions? This is not the way you would create a set.
Well, we do have...
You know, somebody was told, this architect was told, I believe, to issue these in such a way.
No.
Well, why aren't there any revisions, even with this current set that we just submitted?
I've been having a very difficult time getting revisions from this architect, to be honest, and that's...
Well, an architect, a responsible architect, he's been licensed almost as long as I have, would typically bubble an area...
Right, you're right.
...cloud it, and then put a revision in a date. And the reason they do that is so everybody understands what changes happened at what point.
That's right.
But there were decisions made along the way during the construction beyond all the other issues, like the basement. I mean, you made the decision to make it like, you know, it's like, on the drawings, it says it's almost 11 feet, and you show like three stairs. I mean, the stairs would have to be about this tall.
Well, the new basement is deeper. The new basement is deeper, but the...
Yeah, but the drawings that you submitted for permit don't reflect that.
I would have to check that, that's, I'm not...
The set's right over there.
Yeah.
So I guess, I just feel there's been a layer of deceit for this, and what you're requesting now...
One, two, three.
I have no intention of approving.
Okay.
Because you created your own hardship.
So we...
You built out the third floor. It had a, it had a, you know, that bay area had a roof on it on the second floor, and it's shown in our drawings that you submitted us, that showed that it was a two-story structure and the roof, and you went ahead, and with the new set, you created a third-floor bay area, which now you're asking for a hardship because you can't get access to the fourth level, which makes absolutely no sense whatsoever.
I mean, I think...
I mean, you said you didn't wanna do a hatch, or you couldn't find a hatch under $65,000 that was acceptable and met your requirements. Look, a commercial hatch, honestly, how much does a commercial hatch cost in a, in a commercial building?
Yeah, well, the sixty...
You have any idea?
The $65 hatch was the UK cockpit version of hatch. That wasn't, that wasn't the regular swing-up hatch. We actually, did you get prices on, I don't know if we ever actually found a swing-up hatch?
Regular commercial hatch is under $2,000. So why, why do you need that access?
Are you talking about like a hatch on a flat roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, we...
You can get other ones, too.
Well, we were never looking to do that, because that...
But did you, did you say in that meeting that your intention was to have a fourth level and have a deck?
I mean, I guess if, if you felt like we had to come back, we would've come back. I just, the village didn't...
But, I mean, at that time, at the time of the variance hearings, we honestly were not really focused on building out the third floor.
But even your drawings that you submitted for construction don't reflect what you did now. I mean, what you submitted to get your original permit doesn't show going up to 39 feet.
It shows going up to 35 feet.
Yeah, which is...
Right, and so, and I was gonna get to explaining, you know, what's there now and why. I mean, the...
Okay, I apologize if I interrupt.
Yeah, I mean, the stairway housing, the way it's built now, you know, just like I could try to show it here. Is that, let me sign up. So, this was the hatch that was approved, you know, in the permit set, and this is what's here now, which, you know, was built as, you know, originally as temporary access for, to the roof by the contractor, and it was essentially located based on, you know, having a minimum of...
But you built that stairway, so you created the condition?
Yes, yes, we did. Yeah, I'm not saying we didn't create this, I'm just saying why it's where it is. Essentially, you know, we needed 80 inches below this beam for...
So you created your own hardship?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that this hardship is existing. I think we're really here to ask...
Well, it is existing, 'cause you built it already.
Well, yes, but by my own doing, so, I mean, we're certainly not saying, you know, we are in a situation that we didn't create. What we're saying is, you know, what's there now is a stair that has the 80-inch clearance under the flitch beam, that has a three-foot landing, which is the minimum, which you usually would require, and an 80-inch door above a four-inch threshold, you know, which is, would all be a standard, you know, requirement, and potentially okay with, with, with the village, other than it's now creating additional square footage. What essentially happened, based on where the flitch beam is, and complying with all those 80-inch requirements, is the back west end of that structure sticks eight inches beyond the roof line, and the total really is 13 inches, 'cause it starts counting on the inside of the rafter in terms of additional square footage. So we have 13 inches by seven-foot width that is creating this eight additional square feet.
What was the original, when you came to us, what was the original intent of that hatch?
The original intent of the hatch is what, is what we're using for now, I mean...
It made it sound like it was for maintenance. I don't know if anybody else interpreted that.
So there was a hatch there?
There was a, kind of, the hatch, you know, Mr. Sermon's referring to, which is a, you know, a ladder up to the flat section of the roof, the hatch that opens up, but it was not unhinged, it was an old wooden hatch in 1936 that you had to...
Like you'd just push up and move, yeah.
You lift up and you slide over, and that's how you got up there originally. And so this, this was gonna be an improvement on that. I mean, you would have a stair with a handrail and a hatch that flips up to walk out on a surface, and then a couple more stairs to get to the main deck.
But you created that deck without thinking...
Yes, yeah.
Knowing, going through the whole process, being educated professionals, you didn't think that it was necessary to get a permit for that?
Well, no, we got, we got a permit for everything...
Except for the additional part.
Except for the extra height, and as soon as we...
So you felt that it wasn't important at that point?
No, well, as soon as we got drawings from the architect, we got them in. We just had a hard time getting drawings as you've...
But you wouldn't proceed? If you're in construction, you don't proceed without drawings?
Well, but they built it as a temporary structure.
No contractor will proceed without drawings, so...
But this contractor did proceed.
He actually did build this without drawings, yeah.
But you built it without a permit, and it was only by chance that an electrical inspector noticed what was happening, otherwise...
No, that's not true at all. That's not true at all. No, we completely were trying to get revised drawings. We couldn't get an MEP inspection without revised drawings. I mean, we, we were trying to get...
But you didn't get, you didn't think that it was necessary to get a permit for that?
That's not true.
You didn't think it was necessary to get a permit?
No, 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 no. We're here now, we're here now.
My understanding is that you got permits to improve the attic, is that right?
Yes, yes.
And what you didn't get a permit for was to create the extra height in that section due to the stairways going up.
That's what we're here now to ask for.
Right, and that's what you're here for now.
FAR, actually.
So, so, I mean, one couldn't interpret...
Well, it's a height issue as well.
Well, it's a height issue because it creates more square footage. It's not a height issue overall, because stairway housing can be 12 feet above the building, billable limit, so...
If it's a flat roof.
Yes, so the housing, stairway housing can go to 47 feet in this case.
Forty-seven?
Yes, which is a lot, but we're, you know, we're, we're at like 36 something, but...
But it's...
So it's, it's not a...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a height issue, other than...
It's a height issue for us.
Our height's creating square footage, which we don't have.
But you're creating another space up there. You've created another space that wasn't on the original drawings, was never presented to us. It was presented as a hatch, so now you've taken a hatch, and, you know, it looks like it'll be a great deck out there, but it's not allowed by...
It would've been even with, with the hatch. I mean, we're not changing anything other than what's on that drawing.
Didn't you create a stone area and sort of a stone railing?
There's, there's a parapet around, yeah.
But that was in the approved...
But that was all in the approved drawings. The only thing that's not in the approved drawings...
In what approved drawings? The original set, or the submit you just submitted two months ago?
No, no, from February 2017. The only thing that's changed is, we're now asking for, you know, this...
I'm gonna have to take a look at the set, it's right over there.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't think any of this is reflected. You can continue.
And, and, so by putting like a wooden deck up here and stuff like, oh, I'm sorry.
Oops, sorry. So it doesn't show anything over 35 feet on these drawings?
That's correct, and that's what we're here for today, is to ask for that.
But you're asking after the fact?
Oh, no, it's...
And our, our...
Yeah.
The question is, for improvement of that, do they need a permit? If this was brought to us today and it wasn't built, what would we do?
Yes, and we were prepared to do what we need to do. I mean, the contractor...
But here, it does directly...
He's gonna have to redo this, based on what the village says, and he essentially built this as a temporary facility to get up to the roof, and we've been waiting all this time.
But this, the drawing doesn't reflect it in no point until just less than two months ago you submitted.
In July, it's in July.
Yeah, but it was already, it's already built.
As a temporary structure.
The contractor built it as a...
Temporary means that we're here to ask you what we should do.
Temporary isn't typically building stones.
Well, that's, that's the second issue, and Lisa was there the day that it happened. We were in July.
I'm sorry, Mr. Berra, can you come over to the microphone? There's, there's like three people that watch us, and they like to hear what we're all saying.
So, I mean, Dan was saying that this stairway housing was built by our contractor as a temporary structure, because he and a multitude of workers needed to get out to the roof in a safe fashion, and he, he told us he was building it, you know, as a temporary basis, and he would make whatever modifications were necessary, and this is while we were trying to sort out the hatch issue. Now, in retrospect, should we have understood to come in on the temporary structure, probably so, but at the time, we didn't, but...
So, I'm sorry, you're saying that this is a temporary structure up there?
He built it as a temporary structure.
He built it as a temporary structure. Now, when we went in to meet with Lisa and to say, "Look, we have not sorted out the hatch, we're gonna have to, you know, request a change, here's where we are on it," we said, we invited Lisa, we invited Mr. Adler that day to come take a look at it, and, I mean, we had, you know, nothing to hide, "Come take a look at it."
Well, we were trying to figure out what to do.
Trying to figure out, honestly, what to do. And the day they came over, our contractor, unbeknownst to us, decided to put stone on the outside of it, and we, I mean, Lisa saw that we were shocked, we told him to stop doing that.
What was happening is we were getting leaking, 'cause this, this thing was, you know, it was just pretty much Tyvek, exposed Tyvek, and we were getting leaking, and his theory was, you know, if you put stone on it, it'll stop the leaking, but then guaranteed us that he will do whatever modification he needs to do. You know, at that point, we were already talking to Lisa, and Lisa was telling us, "Well, one of the options is you could just lower it, you could just lower it so that you don't have any more FAR." We're perfectly willing to do that. We think that's probably the direction, you know, that we're going, but we just wanted to ask, you know...
And we knew we had to come on the flat roof issue anyway that materialized.
And I don't know that you guys see this, but from this side, or at least this person's perspective, it seems like you say, "Well, we wanna do this," and you get an approval, and then you do that plus something, and then you say, "Well, we wanna keep this, 'cause we already did it," and that makes me feel like, "Well, okay, if you keep that, what else are you gonna ask for and do later?"
Yeah.
And so it makes it more difficult for myself to say, "Oh, yeah, go ahead and have that," because you've already proven that if you're given an inch, you're gonna take a foot.
Yeah, that's fair, I mean...
So I don't know if you, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, I, and we're, yeah, we're throwing ourselves...
I can see how it has created that impression. That was not our, not our intent, for sure, and...
Question on the 39 feet.
Yeah.
Trying to understand this. So we have 39, 39.34 feet stairway housing height, is that right?
Right.
Right. And the code allows 39 feet. Is that accurate? Because we need a .34 variance.
Well, that, that, because, sorry, I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm sorry.
Since we're calling the house a flat-roofed home, the maximum height of the house would be limited to 27 feet, plus 12 feet for a stair housing would get you to the 39 feet that would apply for a flat-roofed, 27-foot limited home.
Otherwise...
Otherwise, it would be 12 feet on top of 35, 47 feet would be allowable.
So it just, it just coincidental that this stairway housing height is almost as it exists, almost in conformance? Like, how did, how did 39, I'm just curious?
Well, so, he essentially built that...
'Cause four inches could just, you know...
Yeah, it's crazy, so...
Borderlines are out of place.
So it all stemmed from where this flish plate beam was, and so he had to have his 80 inches, you know, above the stair, and then he had to have a three foot, or he said he had to have a three-foot landing, and then he had a four-inch... Right, so, you know, we don't have to have a three-foot landing, but when he built it, that's the way he built it.
Eighty, I was referring to 80 inches.
Oh, I see, okay. So then he built the landing, he put a four-inch threshold, he did an 80-inch door, and a two-by-six, you know, header, and that's how he ended up with this, with this housing, stairway housing.
It's temporary, it's applied wood door.
There's a clear.
And then there's a clear skylight on top, pretty much.
He didn't, he didn't build that. That was ordered.
Yeah, we put that on, again, to stop the leaking, and, you know, at this point, we were understanding that, you know, one of our options was just to lower it, so we think that's probably the direction we're going, is to get away from that extra FAR, you know, we'd have to lower it, and we'd have to, you know, figure out how low we need to go, but I feel like lowering it's gonna be better than the hatch, quite honestly. And if that's what you tell us to do, that's what we're gonna do, but.
So was it coincidence that this is almost?
It was, yeah, it really was, yeah, yeah.
By happenstance that we're almost inconformance?
Yeah, right, we're that close. We're that close. I mean, because it, it really just came down this minimum stair clearances and landings.
Any other questions for our applicant?
So that was just the one issue.
Please, hold that call. Call's very important.
In the meantime, is there anything else you want to share with us about?
I just wanted to go back just to complete what happened after the first variance, because I still feel like there's an impression that I don't believe is right, although I understand how there could be such an impression. I mean, after the first variance, although we were very grateful to get it from the village board for sure, we still were evaluating carefully whether we should tear down the house, because we were starting to talk to the contractors, we were understanding that the complexity, the timeline, even, you know, put aside the attic space, was just, was gonna be enormous, and it was gonna be much more difficult than, than just, than tearing down and building, and then we could have probably gotten in for years. So it was during that time period when we were really trying to figure out what to do and taking a hard look at what had come out at the, at the village board hearing, and we met with Lisa and John multiple times to think through the options and signaled to them, we may still tear down. We met with brokers to figure out what would, you know, if you're, if this is a house that's comparable to new construction.
Everyone was telling us to tear it down.
You know, what are the kind of amenities that you would want to have for a house that's comparable to new construction? We asked them, are people building out the third floor? Because we actually didn't know, and it was kind of once we were talking to brokers to understand what is, what is common in the neighborhood? Are people building out the third floor? Are they not building out the third floor? What could we do under the village board approval? What would it actually take? That's why we started meeting with structural engineers. What would it actually take to make all of these renovations? Somebody eventually said, you know, again, part of it, you'd have to cut out the entire staircase and move it to another location. So we were looking at all of that stuff, trying to figure out what to do, and to be honest, I mean, the guidance from the brokers was, you are far better off just tearing it down. It's just, it's not gonna be a good return on investment. People don't really want renovated old homes, and we were going, all of that was sort of swirling around when we were trying to figure out what to do, and we had not made up, you know, at the time of those hearings, we, we had not made up our mind. We were preservationists at heart, and we felt like this house was crying out to be saved, but we, you know, we also, some degree of practicality, had to make sure we, you know, didn't throw away our life savings. We're just, we're trying to figure it all out, and eventually, when we got the, you know, it was like a specific recommendation about moving the stairs and shoring up the house and all these different ways to consider doing the attic space, it was made clear to us that if you're gonna do that kind of thing, you have to do it while the house is being renovated. It's not like you can move in and finish your basement later. I mean, if you're gonna add columns all the way down throughout the entire house and have to pour new footings for those columns and move the entire staircase, it's kind of either now or never. So as much as early on, I mean, we were not particularly inclined to do something in the third floor, because I just, I do not believe that it's as useful as a first-floor family room or, you know, expected these days. Ultimately, when kind of told, like, this is, like, it's now or never, this is it, and we were weighing all these options, we ultimately decided, okay, let's, let's proceed with it, but it was not, it was not something that we had, you know, in our minds, and we're trying to misrepresent to the various boards. We really, we really did not at the time. I mean, we, we were not inclined to do it, we didn't have all the facts and information, and we were, you know, as truthful as we could be, you know, at the time, but we just, we, we had not, and maybe in retrospect, the lesson is, we should have completed our full-on analysis, you know, we should have engaged all the engineers, we should have done all of that before we came, before you guys, but we, we have not done this before, we did, you know, we did not know, and that's, you know, that's how we ended up, kind of where we are initially, but I just, I wanted to make sure that, that that was on the record, because I think that's a little bit different than any impression that we always had a sneaky plan to do the attic from the beginning, which was, which was simply not the case. And to be honest, to this day, now that it's, you know, three years later, just about, I frankly regret that we took the complicated path. I do regret that, but, but at the time, you make the best decisions you can based on the information you have, and, and we learned a lot in this horribly painful process, and certainly, you know, have we made mistakes? There's no question we have. No one could have been more horrified than us to see our builder putting stone on that structure the day we invited Lisa and John to come see it. I mean, it was crazy.
There's no contractor that will do that without drawings.
I'm sorry that we do.
No contractor would go and build something like that with a roof deck.
Well, you know, I'm wondering whether this guy is something we can consider a contractor, to be honest, you know.
Okay, but because what happens is, as soon as, you know, you didn't have the deck shown on the original plans.
Well, we had it, we had it shown in the permit plans.
Yeah, we have it on.
When you say the permit, you're saying the ones that we got two months ago?
No, 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 I'm saying these ones right here. They're on these drawings, right here.
We just looked at it, and there was nothing above 39 feet.
Yes, there is. Well, no, 35 feet. You're talking about the stairway housing, or are you talking?
Yeah, the stairway housing.
Oh, the stairway housing.
And which then allowed you then to create a deck. The deck isn't shown on there.
Well, yes, it is.
On the fourth floor?
Yes. It's right, it's right here.
I guess, you know, and the reason the contractor would not take the responsibility? Because as soon as he does that, he accepts all the liability that goes along with it. And if you didn't have the proper railing, and that railing broke, and somebody fell from that height, the contractor has now assumed all the responsibility. The design professional is let go and not, no longer responsible. So the architect would never let anything be built. I would never let, as an architect, let anything be built that isn't drawn and approved. And I, I've constructed hundreds of million dollars worth of buildings. No contractor will build something unless you have drawings, and I'm talking, I've done really small projects as well.
He built it based on these drawings. The only thing he didn't do that's on these drawings was.
Need Dan to speak into that microphone?
This is the deck that's up there now.
I could try.
Okay, so is this, and he essentially built this and this per plan. The only thing he did different was he went two feet higher and then.
Without a permit.
Without, without a permit, and that's what we're here now to ask for.
Yeah, but you built, it's after you build it. That's the difficulty that our committee has, that after you've built something, now you're asking for forgiveness.
Yeah, yes, and we understand that's not a good position to be in, for sure.
But since you were creating, you know, you created this whole area here, and the stair that went up to it, you know.
At this point, we're just asking you what to do.
Sure, what to do.
What to do. And that's simply, whatever you used to tell us to do, we're gonna do. We're here to be told what to do.
And the contractor knows that he's gonna have to address it. I mean, there's no question.
And he's gonna redo it, and it's no charge to me, because I didn't want him to do that in the first place.
But he did, in fairness, have to build a way for his workers to get out to the roof. I mean, we had multiple roof-ish, I mean, he, he did have to have some kind of temporary access to the roof that was gonna be more workable for a whole bunch of construction workers besides just like a push-up hatch. I mean, he did need that, so the line between something temporary for his workers and then something.
I think it was permanent in his mind, but it's always been temporary in my mind.
Right, stone on, but he.
I do have a question for Lisa, just to make sure everyone's clear. A new home allowable FAR 4750.85.
Yes.
Right.
Maslow.
And this is the point, I, I saw a few different numbers. Existing FAR 52, 5425?
I've got 54, I just did the math, too. Those pages, it's killing me trying to find them each time. I have 5417 is what I.
5417.
What do you have?
I think 5426. Where did you find 17?
Because I added up your floor area pages.
Hmm, okay.
So you got nothing for the basement, although that's built out. You got 2518 for the first floor, you got 2051 for the second floor, and 848 for the third floor. Back like page 47, it looks like.
Yeah, let me, let me double check that, but it was, it was just, it was intended to be 8.14, more than what they were approved for before, but let me.
April, okay, so.
What is the total now?
Fifty-four.
It's 5420-ish.
5425. So 50, 5417, and then another eight, 8.175.
5425, there you go.
Makes it 54 point, 54.25.17, right?
5425.17.
Right, so that's, that is, that exists, so new home.
So the difference between, between the previous one and this one is eight feet some feet?
Right.
Which.
No, because they weren't gonna do the, when it came before us.
Yes.
There was no, it was not attic. Now it's finished attic, so this is finished span.
So for the first time through, this was a three-to-three vote. I was not here for the vote. This is before Christine joined our board. There were only six people. It was a three-to-three vote, and the request was for the additional first floor space for the family room and some, a partial second floor space, is that right?
A two-story addition, a family room.
Right.
Was for 900 and.
Right.
67, yeah.
67.
Right. 967.
Now it's 975, so it's eight point something different.
Right, that's, that's the stairway housing.
Right, which is this additional space at the top of the stairs to get out on the roof.
Eight feet.
One, one foot of the three-foot landing, essentially.
Right, so I think what Mike's trying to point out is.
I just want to clarify that that's what, yeah, the new home, 475085, and current 5425.
5425 as built.
Right.
We approved it at 5417.
We were a negative recommendation to the village board, because it was a three-to-three vote, and the village board overturned us and voted okay, and, you know, this is some of the clarification of the minutes were emailed to us, or an extended version of the minutes were emailed to us, so that you can interpret, try and interpret what the village board was trying to say, and again, it's, it's a perspective, it's an interpretation of what they were saying. Yeah, whether I made the comment, I know I thought it, that trustee Kruger, you know, the way that I read what he was saying was, well, they're coming and they're asking for the family room and the second-story addition, and, and they're getting penalized for having this attic space that they can't use, so therefore, I was, that's the way I took what he was saying. But then what happened after that, once they got the approval, when they submitted their plans, after they had talked to structural engineers, they said, well, let's build out the attic. And so because the attic space was being counted against them, is kind of, is, that's kind of what I was reading, and I know we're in discussion right now, but so that we can all move forward and.
Well, this might, this might bring up other questions, what you're summarizing.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of, that's the timeline as I was reading it, and, and the way that we've gotten to where we are, that they got then, village staff took the approval from the board, that, they didn't say they couldn't do anything with the attic, so therefore, village staff said, well, yeah, we'll let you have a permit to go ahead and build the attic.
But in the initial request, they had to include the attic space, right?
Yeah, because it was a penalty against them.
So as long as it was approved, what differences would make it after the fact that they built it out and happened?
Well, but still, can I, can I respond to that? We, we asked.
I know, I, I was, yeah, I was here.
You were there.
And I remember we did, and we said they shouldn't be penalized for that space because they weren't gonna use it.
Because it's not usable except for storage. And I also asked, well, what, somebody asked, what about the basement? Well, the basement's not usable because it's only seven-foot ceiling. That turned out not to be correct. So I think we've been.
We made it eight, we made it eight foot, yeah.
You did not tell us that you intend to do that.
Well, we didn't know if we were gonna do it or not until after we got approval from the village board and started researching it and talking to engineers, architects, and contractors. We just, we didn't really know what we were gonna do.
Right, so, but here's, you know. I qualify, now, just on your, on your behalf, you know, I asked Lisa during the meeting, I said, well, at what point does the basement count as FAR against them? Additional FAR, because you've got roughly, you know, 1,800 to 2,000 square feet in the basement that is now 8 feet high and, you know, livable space, usable space for whatever purpose. She said, well, because it's below grade, it doesn't count.
None of it counts.
None of it counts.
Right.
So, I mean, on one hand, you could say this is a 7,000-square-foot house, but really, 2,000 roughly of, of, is the basement, and it's not supposed to count against you.
Right.
Right. All right, are we all same page roughly?
Yep.
Not necessarily in agreement, but same page?
Yes, so then, so there's another issue.
Should we address the flat roof issue, which we have not really.
So the flat roof is about the way that we're calculating this extra four inches?
Well, it's more than just the four inches.
Well, it's 39.4.
It leads to the four-inch issue. It leads, it leads to the four-inch issue.
But there are several issues that are bound up in it. So, so here, for our variance submission, we showed a flat roof in the mansard style, so very, you know, steep sides, flat on top, same style for the addition as for the original house. To be architecturally consistent, we showed that on the plans for this board, for the village board, and no, no one raised an issue about the flat roof at that time, and the plans that the village board approved, you know, had this flat roof, though, I mean, it was approved without comment or without discussion. Only later did we learn that there was a flat roof issue, and the complexity is, the ordinance is unfortunately kind of inconsistent and confusing on this point, and probably needs to be amended for the future. There's two provisions of the ordinance that are relevant. One says that homes with a predominantly, it's the key word, predominantly flat roof are subject to the two-story limitation and 27-foot height limitation, but then a separate definition indicates that, a completely separate provision, if a house has like greater than 25% flat roof, it's a flat roof house. So putting those two provisions together, the community development has now said that the only way that they can interpret that predominantly standard is that you have a predominantly flat roof for which these limitations apply if it's greater than 25% flat. Our roof with the addition in the old house, those two things together are 31% flat. So we are over that. Again, it was, you know, not, not, not caught or addressed in the meeting, probably because the code, I think, is inconsistent.
It was shown in the drawings, but not picked up in the description.
Not picked up in the description, or just, and it should have been initially.
Should have been, I guess, reviewed.
I think on this issue, you know, I would hope that everyone would think that we should have the same architectural style for both the addition and the main house, and that was clearly the intent of the original, you know, variance drawings.
And it keeps the.
But it, but because, because that issue has both a height and story limitations, it actually triggers three independent variances.
All those other issues, right.
So let me, as I reread this.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about a 975-square-foot total floor area variation, not an eight-foot.
Well, includes the original 967 that was already there.
Is that the net?
Plus the new eight.
All right, so from before, plus, okay. The eight-foot height variation is for the top of the stairwell getting out.
Yeah, the stairway, the stairway housing.
Yeah, the eight-foot is for the existing roof line of the existing part, the main
So from before plus, okay, the eight-foot height variation is for the top of the stairwell.
Yes, yeah, the stairway, the stairway housing.
Yeah, the eight-foot is for the, the existing roof line of the existing part, the main part of the house.
The stairway housing there.
Nope, no, it's the house.
Because, because we have always had a thirty-five-foot, three-story house, so it seemed strange to us that now we're being told that we have a two-story, twenty-seven-foot house, right, which is the way that the code reads, so.
And then the point three-four stairway housing height variation, that's that little bit.
That's what, that's what Mike.
Right, just by coincidence.
And a mo, and a variation to modify the approval granted, blah, 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 to retain a flat roof over a stairway, which is the addition that you put on.
Correct.
For ingress egress to the roof area.
Uh, no, it's not.
The top of the stairs out onto the.
No, it's not that. It's the addition over the family room.
So it's that whole addition.
To retain the flat roof over an addition and a stairway housing on a legal non-conforming structure.
Yeah, much with the and stairway housing.
Well, to retain the stairway housing.
Which is where?
That's the top of the stairs.
That's the projection we're talking about.
But there's two, two things combined into that one sentence, into that one statement.
Exactly, right, it's the roof of the addition and.
I mean, the main, I guess the main flat roof we're asking for is over the addition here. Which was shown in the, you know, original plan drawings. It just, it wasn't calculated and it wasn't, they didn't realize it was six percent over the twenty-five.
Right, and I don't think people focused on the inconsistency in the code here and the predominant and all of that, so.
So the extra six percent is triggering all these other things, including four inches on the stairway housing. But it's unrelated to the eight square feet because.
Right.
That is being driven by that whole eighty-inch clearance at the stairs and the three-foot landing and everything else and just push the thirteen inches out. Because it's more than six-eight high, it's now new FAR. So that's the second issue.
Right.
Which we can solve by just lowering it if, if that's what you want us to do.
Well, you know, keep in mind, and I have to remind people of this, we're an advisory board.
Mm-hmm.
Village board is gonna tell you what you have to do. Uh, but we make a recommendation based on code, and then they can either listen to us or not listen to us.
Right.
So you have the family room that you wanted.
We, we did get that, yes.
We did get the family room, yes.
So now, what, what, now that you've built out the attic, what were your plans for the attic?
Well, it was supposed to be my office, but now my son wants to make it his man pal, his palace. But, yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, it's just ex, it's just extra space.
Yeah, I mean, is it nice to have an extra, you know, you know, extra space in the house?
It's debatable.
Sure, that's why, that's why newer houses are building out third floors. But I would say it's just still nowhere you, near as useful as having, you know, first floor space. It's where, where you live and.
Yeah, they're two different things. They're really, I mean, it's, but it's really just, you know, bonus space. I'm gonna have my, my office up there and might see more of my son than I want to when I'm up there.
Right.
Well, you may not want him up there. All right, do we have any other questions for our applicant? Is everybody good?
Yep.
All right, is there anything else you want to add before I close the case?
Thanks, I think that's it, and so.
I, I don't think so. Again, I guess, I guess, I would just say once again, we. We tried to be straightforward based on the information that we had at the time. In retrospect, I wish that we had fully evaluated things, maybe, you know, in a different way. But we did try to be straightforward and we agonized for a long time over what is the best path forward for this house. The tear down, the fix this up, the do different things. We just, we spent a lot of time after we knew what the options were, we thought we knew what the options were, trying to figure out what to do to preserve the house.
Well, if I can comment to, I mean, you certainly have a lot more house than you would have if you had torn it down. You've also got, I think, a visually appealing, much better product by keeping the house than you would have if you would have.
Yeah, I mean, it's beautiful.
Because the envelope that you're, you have to build within under new construction, you're limited in certain design, you know, elements. And I, so, i, i, on one hand, you know, money and time aside, I think you've got a much better product for yourselves than if you would have.
Well, we hope in the long run, yeah.
We hope in the long run that that is the case.
I've got a lot of neighbors that thank us for saving the house. We bring people stop and say.
It's all in our back end, you know, I mean, there's, we got comments.
People don't even know, just, hey, you're the owner, boy, it looks great and all those kind of things. And those kind of things do keep us moving, you know? Uh, and, and we had painstakingly thought about every little thing, trying to make it, you know, modernize it, but make it keep the original character.
Yeah.
And, uh, hopefully we're almost done.
You are almost done, it's just.
One way or the other.
Little stress hurdles and then, and then you'll be done.
Yeah, good to get them in the house before they graduate from high school, so, or.
All right, we're good?
Okay, yes, thank you.
All right, anybody in the audience wants to speak either for or against this case? You guys don't want to be on record?
I have to vote this case.
All right, we have one vote for it. Uh, all right, I'm gonna close the case and ask if there's a member of the board that wants to make a motion here. Mr. Boyer, thank you very much.
Regarding the case number twenty-eighteen Z fifty-three, for the purpose of discussion, I move to recommend granting requests for a nine hundred and seventy-five point five-five square foot total floor area variation and eight-foot height variation, a one-story height variation, a point three-four foot stairway housing height variation, and a variation to modify the approval granted by ordinance twenty sixteen oh twenty-seven to retain a flat roof over an addition and a stairway housing on a legal non-conforming structure at eight nineteen Michigan Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Kohling, thank you very much. Mr. Boyer, your motion.
So, super, uh, super weird position that we're in, um, because, well, initially, in the first case, when it was originally before us, I supported it. And the reason for that was the, they were being penalized because of the unusable attic space. And that was what I based my decision on. You know, we heard from the neighbor, Mr. Belzano, and he was, he was really against this. And actually, he argued that, you know, the attic space could be built out, you know? He was, he was making, um, some arguments that, that, why we shouldn't approve this. And it's unfortunate because I balanced my decision with private property rights of the, the owner, uh, the applica, strict application of the code and how it affects the neighbors. So I, I balanced all that and I reconciled with an approval based on the hardship of them having an attic that was unusable. That's, that's how I, I came to approve it. Feel bad for Mr. Belzano because what he was afraid was gonna happen, happened, right? So it's a weird position because there is no hardship anymore for the original case.
There's no hardship for the original case.
Right, so it's done, it's over, but the reason why we approved.
Why you approved.
I approved it, right. And, I'm sorry, when we say we, yeah, I approved it, it was three, the people voted against it. But I would, I would, I would say that, reading through the minutes of the village board a number of times and, and underlining and taking notes, really trying to digest it, is, I don't see any other way to read it than that's what they based their approval on as well. I mean, there, I, there's no other, you have to contort yourself in a pretzel to, to say otherwise. Now, I, I don't know that we need, it's like belt and suspenders, right? Do you have to condition approval with the reason why we gave the hardship and, right? So if we, so if we say, we're giving you a hardship, we're giving you the approval based on this hardship, do we have to say that in, or the approval now, village board and, and the zoning board, right? To spell out exactly what they shouldn't, can't do because this is the reason for the hardship, right? Does that make sense?
A little bit, but I think you're.
I think we, I think when we all, yeah, listened to it, we didn't think they should be penalized because they had an attic they weren't gonna use. And so we approved the fifty-four hundred square feet.
Well.
Yeah, or three to three, we didn't, the village board did, but we were three to three. So now they decided to use that space. I mean, village board said they could have that many square feet. I mean, they want eight more square feet, which is the minimus of nothing. So, you know, do, do you lose your, I mean, because I voted for as well. I voted for more on the basis that, kind of on the old Ken Darbyshire theory.
I think I probably brought up Ken Darbyshire.
Right, that, you know, some of these old homes need to have, you need to have a little leeway in order to keep them around. And I still feel that way. And, you know, if, if one of the alternatives here is to not have the house, then I have no problem with this. Because everything is the minimus. I understand all the, the backstory and, you know, where people being sneaky and, and what have you. So my big, my, you know, I'm still, if an alternative is to rip it down, then I, I'm like, well, I think we should approve it. If we don't approve it, I'm not exactly sure, I, I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what the, what the upshot of that is, I guess. What do you do, make, make the attic unusable in order to conform to the original?
So here is my, I was trying to compare it to other cases where people had done things without permits. Now, they received a permit for almost everything that they did. And, and, so I was thinking to myself, okay, would, you know, do we use the rule? All right, if, if, if they'd come to us without doing the work, would we approve it? You know, and, and so then I was thinking about it, well, does that kind of apply here? Does it not? It sort of does, but I think the essence of that thought was, if we would say no, and yet the work was already done, so it goes to the village board as a negative recommendation, it's up to the village board to make the ultimate decision. And again, I think that's ultimately the way that I'm gonna look at this, is, um, I don't think that this is something that our board really makes the ultimate decision on. I think, I'm gonna say no because I think it's on the village board to say, it's okay for you to, um, say you're gonna do one thing, change your mind, build something out, do it a little more, ask for more relief. I think it's up to the village board to say, yeah, you guys can do that in the village.
But they've overturned us before when we've had a positive recommendation.
That's all right, let them, yeah.
I, I don't, I don't know that.
Let them make the final decision.
Flip it to the village board is.
But you're, you're specifically talking about the.
The process that has happened.
Well, I read the process, but what's before us tonight. So without, so, even without the past history, would you, would you say that this is self-created?
I would say this is self-created, yeah, absolutely.
And besides that, I, I just don't think we should reward bad behavior.
Which is part of what I was saying, hey, send it because of the process, send it back to them. Let them say it's okay to do this. Let them say, let the village board say that it's okay for people to, you know, change their mind in midstream and, you know, add a little something extra and then come back and ask for it to be okay. Or however you want to look at it, you know, because that's, that's the perspective I have on it, all right?
They did get approval for the attic though.
So I think, so here's, you know, the, the, whether it was.
For building permit.
Yeah, whether it was in the notes that we received as a supplemental, um, you know, minutes and the explanation, you know, you think about.
The approval sheet is on that, those original plans, so you can read through what, what was approved. And so it shows as, um, as.
Plans.
As variance, right? So the additional square feet shows that the variance was approved on the approval sheet as those plans were approved.
So here's, I guess where I'm gonna continue on is that when, when village staff looked at the approval from the village board, they said, well, they didn't say they couldn't build out the attic, so we'll give them permits to go ahead and build out the attic. Because that's what now they're asking to do, and they said that they didn't say they couldn't, so let's let them. And, and yet.
I guess now, we should be on notice that the village board should explicitly condition these things because people will work around it.
But that's my, that's the belt and suspenders. I mean, right, do we have to, we're, right? We're going over and having a discussion about what the hardship is. But then we have to say exactly, we have to, we have to spell out exactly what all the thought processes.
I don't have, I guess, I don't have.
What, if, if it gets voted no, what, I mean, what do they have to do?
Whatever the village board wants.
Wants to do.
Maybe it's, um, you know, they can, what they can do is, they can, um, they can, with extra, like, change the permit somehow.
There's like, there's a way that they can fee through the permits as like a penalty, right? I mean, there's, um, it's, but it's, they're, ultimately, they're not gonna make them take it out. And that's what everybody, you know, counts on, is that, look, there was a house built that the, which is what motivated me to even get involved in this. So this was back almost ten years ago. Uh, I came to a meeting because a house was built, the guy didn't follow his plans, and he built the basement an extra, like, eight inches higher so that they could have livable space in the basement, even though that wasn't approved. It was a brand-new house. And the way that it was caught was because as you walked up to the front door, there was an odd step. You know, the guy had poured his concrete with an odd step, like a four-inch step. Well, why is that? And it was in the final, um, what was it, the, what do they call it, the?
Final inspection?
Yeah, but when you get permission to occupy.
Occupancy, occupancy permit.
It was the absolute last inspection that they realized that, when they measured that, and what happened? So this guy illegally built the house to get extra dollars out of selling the house. And what did the village board do? They referred it to the buildings, uh, committee, land use committee. And land use committee agreed to tell this guy, he's not allowed to build in the village anymore and we're gonna fine you like, you know, ten or twelve grand, whatever it was. It was a nominal amount. And he walks away making a hundred grand more, I mean, and, and that, that wasn't right. But that's the way that it, it works. It's, what is the village, they're not gonna tell you to take something down.
Except in San Francisco now.
Yeah, and well, San Francisco's the only one that we've, that made the news where they're making the guy rebuild.
Build the house he tore down.
A house that he tore down. Yeah.
People tore down a historic house, they're gonna use it to rebuild an exact replica.
Yes.
Who knows what's gonna happen, but that's.
That's the threat.
I guess, you know, going through the, I'm sorry, you can finish up. No, I was just gonna say, I was on the plan commission and they had, it was called a PUD or PD, a Plan Development. And in there, the city had this code, and I rewrote it, the majority with, with the whole commission, but there were two of us that kind of led it, Vince McBrien and myself. Because the, the city did have some stuff in there that you had to get all of your drawings complete before we'd consider approval.
Right.
Well, that was, for a commercial project, that was a tremendous amount of money.
Right.
So I can understand, you know, if they, you know, the, coming into it initially, they didn't go through that whole process, all those additional costs, because you don't know where you're gonna go. You know, it, it's coming out of pocket with a lot of money, you're unsure. So, and like I said, the village didn't say they couldn't. I, you know, I don't have a problem. They got the permit for everything up to thirty-five feet. My issue is proceeding beyond the thirty-five feet, up to thirty-nine feet, without getting a permit. That's where my issue is. And if they would have come before us, you know, if we take, that's the instruction that we're supposed to follow, is, what if they came to us before the construction was done? I would not have approved it with thirty-nine feet. That's not consistent with the area. Every, every other house is thirty-five feet in that area, or everywhere I will met if they want to build it to the limit. So it's really that portion, and, you know, it wasn't until these drawings were issued in, in, actually, November sixth.
Of this year.
Of this year. So what is that, you know, five weeks ago that now they're submitting for that?
He said it was drawn in July.
Well, if you, how did they get submitted in July if their date eleven-six, two thousand and eighteen?
We changed from July since July for, you know, questions.
Okay, but that's, that's a point where the revisions would come in handy, so we'd understand that.
Yeah.
Since July, since July.
So the applicant is saying they submitted drawings in July.
Okay, but it was already built.
So, all right.
That's where I have the issue. If they want to go out and spend the money to, um, and they did, to build out the attic space after the village said there was no lim, I don't have an issue with that. I just have an issue with people building stuff without permits and then asking for relief afterwards. So that's what I'm dealing with, just that additional four feet.
So just for clarifis, clarifications sake, the reason they're caught up on this is because they're a flat roof. You know, the, the addition that they put on has a flat roof, what's caused them to go over the percentage, the twenty-five percent rule. And so that's what, if this wasn't a flat roof house, they could go up to.
Forty-seven with the stairway.
Forty-seven, and we wouldn't be here.
Except for the FAR.
No, that.
But I would never, I'm saying, if I would have, if I would have evaluated this as a zoning request initially before the work was done, and they said, we want to do this to create a deck on the fourth floor and we're gonna overrun the thing and we'd like to, a variance for that, I would have said no.
Okay.
A flat roof, I mean, is consistent with the architecture of the house.
Right.
And, I mean, I don't have an issue with the flat roof.
Right, I, I, all I was just trying to clarify was that that causes some of these variance requests. Now, I mean, we still have to deal with the FAR issue, but. So, so that's where you, you say, okay, I can argue that, you know, I'm being caught up in this rule. And Bob's not gonna, Bob doesn't see it that way, is I guess what you're saying.
I just feel that they've, you know, they built that third-floor bay area outside of the pitched roof. You know, we're not talking within the confines of the pitched roof, it's outside of it that they made the decision to build a third-floor area in that, outside of the roof. And now they're asking for relief for something that they constructed. And, you know, if the architect was involved, I guess it sounds like he wasn't as involved, he could have solved this without having to go up to thirty-nine feet.
Right, you could have done some other way of accessing through that, through that roof side, whatever. Is that a mansard roof up there? What do they call that?
The top, when it's flat, it's a mansard, yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so, all right.
So that's the point, I guess, I just wanna make it clear that I have the issue with. I don't have an issue, 'cause the village said that, you know, they didn't put limitations, so they went ahead with that. So I don't have a problem with the second floor, they dug out the basement to make it more, that had to be costly.
Mm-hmm.
But that doesn't count towards the FAR, so it doesn't matter if they wanted to make it really deep, and have a basketball court, I mean, they can do anything they wanted, so.
Anything else?
Well, I guess, I guess the, the, the main question, so, there, there's arguably a hardship for the flat roof issue, right? They get caught in the flat roof issue with the strict application of the zoning codes. But is there a hardship for the additional eight feet, which is caused by the stairway housing, which is caused by the finished attic, right, all the way down the line? So is that, is there, is there a hardship?
I guess it's perspective at this point, you know, where we, we don't all have to agree on how we can make this work for us, or not make this work for us. So, you know, Bob is saying, "Okay, this is where I've got my issue, everything else, I'm fine with." You're gonna say, "Well, I think one leads to the next, leads to the next, and so I actually have a bigger issue." I think that's just the only way that we can get to voting on this right now. You know, one of those cases where.
Time to say joke or something. Lighten things up.
I don't think.
A horse and a buggy.
Are we ready for the vote? I think so. All right, one, two, vote.
Mr. Boyer?
No.
Mr. Kohling?
Yes.
Ms. Noreg?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
Mr. Sermon?
No.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair's gonna vote no as well, so that's gonna go as a negative recommendation to the village board. The meeting's on January eighth, it's in this room, seven-thirty is their meeting. I do need one of you to come up and sign one of these letters for me. You're gonna have to explain to them a little bit, and, yeah.
Sorry, I'm a little disjointed, but.
Now, you know what happened, was you had your flow going, and it got interrupted, yeah, with questions, and, yep, yep, no worries.
Move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendations for zoning board of appeals for case number two-zero-one-eight dash C dash fifty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well. Thank you guys for your time, and.
Mine too.
And, and also, I, sincerely, I appreciate what you guys have done to the house. I mean, it's beautiful, so, and, like I said, with a couple more stress hurdles, you're gonna be through this. It's almost done. Well, in my eyes, it's almost done. All right, you guys have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, one more on the air, guys.
Yep, um, sorry, I'm not sure what happened to case twenty-eighteen C fifty-five and the applicant, but unfortunately, they apparently are not here, so we'll need to table that to our next meeting, January sixteenth, please.
Do we need a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second? Reinhard Schneider's.
Second.
Servant's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well. All right, microphone's open for public comment, there's nobody here, so we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for all the work you have done to supplement this thing.
And the extra time that you had to deal with me this afternoon.
I appreciate you coming in, that was all.
All my questions.
Well, it sounds like you weren't dealing well with a lot of questions.
Yeah, there's still.
Rachel, I think we're done.